I don't know why I asked that, but I just see it. Northeast, they have this like big dedication, new stuff going on. Pretty cool.
There's a bunch of, a bunch of growing, I think that's a bunch of private, I think it should be a must be or something.
Yeah, and they're getting rid of some buildings I knew was like, oh, right, hang on.
Good evening. Welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call this meeting to order and to start, call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. You now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, and under our umbrella, in this world, delivering justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist, Arms.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change. There's been a request to remove item number ten on the consent agenda and add it to the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Right, we'd then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number fifteen on the council agenda, under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing concerning the progress and completion of a Nebraska Department of Economic Development Community Development Block Grant, CDBG project, number twenty dash E D C V dash zero zero two. And to kick off this hearing, I believe we'll hear from a representative of Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, Jeff Christensen.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Christensen with the Northeast Nebraska Development District, one eleven South First Street here in Norfolk. And as part of requirements for the CDBG program, the Community Development Block Grant Program, there's to be two public hearings held. The first one was done at the time of application back in June of two thousand twenty-one, and this is the second one towards the end of the project. The original project was for half a million dollars from the block grant funds, and the business provided six hundred thousand dollars, and they were to create six jobs, and they did that, and then they had some more COVID money, so they offered them another half a million dollars. There was no matching funds required for that, but the stipulation was, and there was amendment to the contract made, to where it extended it twelve months, and then they were also to create an additional six jobs. So there's twelve total jobs involved with the project. They received to have a million dollars in CDBG. And all the jobs have been met. Right now, we're just waiting for the twelve-month monitoring period. The last job, I believe, was created August first, so we have to wait twelve months for that to make sure those, those twelve jobs are maintained. So I'll ask, try to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I think you're off the hook. Thank you.
That's.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make public comment can do so now. Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item number sixteen. Open this public hearing to consider a request from J F T Incorporated to consider a zoning change from R two, one and two residential district to R three, multiple family residential district, on property addressed as nine twenty-two South Fourth Street. And to kick off this public hearing, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. This piece of property is the northwest corner of Fourth and Michigan. It is R two zoned, and from what I've heard, this is from back in the forties to, I think, the seventies, a neighborhood grocery store, and then it turned into a daycare here and since, since then, up until maybe a year or so ago, I think, maybe it closed down. And so the applicants tonight want to change it to R three from R two to make it a triplex, a three-unit townhome, because R two currently allows two units, and so they want to do a third one. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Val. Any questions? Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I'll ask for a planning commission report, please.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September sixth, two thousand twenty-three at the request of J F T Inc. to consider a zoning change from R two, one and two family residential district to R three, multiple family residential district, on property addressed as nine twenty-two South Fourth Street. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a five to zero vote.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the hearing and move to item seventeen. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight forty-eight approving a zoning change from R two to R three on property addressed as nine twenty-two South Fourth Street.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-eight forty-eight approving a zoning change from R two to R three.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion?
Now, what's the, what's the park, uh, on property parking and off-street, or on-street parking, I'm sorry? Is it for three dwellings in that, is there enough parking, off-street parking?
We've kind of measured it, and there's alley access, and so I believe it's, I don't know what width that is, but a parking stall is eight and a half by nineteen, and so if they do a three-unit, they would need six parking stalls on that property off-street.
And this property does have, have it a number of six?
I believe so.
Would they have to come back in front of us? Once we approve this, are we gonna, are they even gonna assure that there's, they're not just parking on the street? Or would they be allowed to park on the street once this is approved without that, without doing the parking?
They would have to find six parking stalls on the property, yeah. So.
They won't be allowed just to park on the street?
Correct. Yeah.
And are you looking to see whether they have it?
Yeah, I was just gonna do a width of the, the property. It looks like it's about a fifty-five-foot wide lot, and so you should be able to, to fit six across there if they're only eight, eight and a half foot wide.
So they would not get an occupancy without it?
Correct. Yes.
I'm just in response to your, to your question we spoke earlier today. I'm Stacy Sullivan with Real Estate Solutions Team. So per so it to the code, there needs to be two park, off-street parking spaces per unit. There's room on the west side, there's also additional setback on the south side to have two, you know, parking for two separate units there, and if we'd be on the east side without parking a city, without blocking a city sidewalk or on-street parking, it would all be off.
Yeah, and fifty-five divided by eight and a half gives you six and a half parking stalls off of the alley, so they could all fit off of the alley there. Yeah. And that would come into play as part of their site plan when they build in, come in with a building permit.
And it looks like there's R three zoning not far away from that.
Yeah, about two blocks away to the west is R three zoning.
And also has the crow flies one block to the southeast on Indiana, third and Indiana. It's been changed to R three for residents.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight forty-eight carries on first reading.
Seeing the opposition, I'll motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second thought.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight forty-eight carries on second and third.
Item number eighteen, we'll open this public hearing to discuss the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-three capital improvement program, which includes the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight one and six-year plan for street improvements. And to kick off this discussion, we'll hear from Lyle Lutt.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. Yes, before you and in your packets, there's the C I P for this vintage. For those following at home or in the crowd, it's gonna start on page one seventy-six. We're actually going to be, this, the traditional C I P, we did a modified version, we talked about briefly, I'll touch up on that as well, starting on page one seventy-six. If the viewers are interested in the CHAF, the Highway, City Highway Allocation Fund, and the streets of work that'll be done, that starts on page one seventy-eight of two hundred and forty-one. And then the modified by allocation starts on page one eighty-nine. So I'll give you the brief anatomy lesson of how the C I P came about for those that are new to it. Feel free to ask questions as we go through it. For those that are familiar with it, look ahead and start planning some questions. But the C I P in general is a document to project fifty thousand dollar purchases out ten years in advance or more. Sometimes they go out farther than that to replace project, to replace equipment and projects. The, the C I P team is primarily made up of Randy and Sheila, myself, Danny's been attending this year, Stephen, Anna. We kind of start the process late winter, early spring, start with gathering input from division heads and what they see in their realms, that what might be needed in the future, and they incorporate into the, into the document and then try and smooth it all out over the course of the year, take it to Andy before it comes to city council. We talked about this at the July twenty-fourth budget meeting. I took it to this Planning Commission in August and, excuse me, September, August, September timeframe, in accordance with state statutes, so here we are. One thing to note about this is everything that's depicted here in all of these pages has a designated funding source, so it's not a deal where some division puts something out ten years in advance or two years or five years with no funding source. There's something that's going to pay for it when that time comes, and that's an abbreviation in about the third column, excuse me, fourth column from the left, the abbreviations there being depicted at the top of what they stand for. This document is a Cliff Notes version of the long-term financial plan, so nothing here necessarily is chiseled in stone. If there's a piece of equipment that needs to wait a little bit, is maybe a lemon and we need to replace it because of the dump truck, for example, is bad, we can bump that forward. If there's one that's exceptionally well, or there's other costs that are weighing in that weren't factored in, that piece of equipment can be bumped back. We have an incredible, incredible maintenance crew, so we can really get a lot of life out of the equipment that we have. But every year, something comes up. Prices change, perhaps equipment size changes, we need more of, we need less of, we need more horsepower, whatever it might be. And it is hard for these division heads to predict with one hundred percent certainty what will be needed in the future with growth and with historical trends and demographic trends, but we try the best that we can. As those division heads look at the cost of their equipment, as they do bid openings for maintainers or dump trucks, we try and update those going forward. Also, if you think about it, there's an inflationary factor that goes along with it as well, so about, and the inflationary factor is about three percent, we said? I can't remember for the, the seven, eight, nine, ten-year outlook roughly.
The first couple of years, I think it was six, and then it went to four, and then three on out.
That's a good point. There was no way for anybody to predict the COVID situation that came along that decreased production, made workforce more challenging. We talked about the, what we're seeing as a trend of about a twenty percent increase in equipment costs, twenty percent increase in workforce costs that was hard to factor in before COVID came along. Starting with that, before we get too much more into this, like I mentioned, page one seventy-six through one eighty-six is the traditional C I P. As you look at the columns from left to right, the second one, you see the division in which it's allocated, the street, I'm looking at the first page there. One seventy-six, one seventy-six. The very first one is admin, window replacements, switch replacement, street division is down below that, you'll see a lot of street division equipment, or street division is heavily equipment-based, so lots of dump trucks, payloaders, snow-removing equipment that gets, has, typically has a standard life expectancy that at the end of its life, we either trade it in, or in some circumstances, we'll sell it to a neighboring community and then they can use it as well. So you'll see the general fund on those first few pages, or the street division admin for the first few pages in the general fund, then transitions into the parks division online on page one seventy-eight, one that's always of interesting topic is the landscape master plan, plan in streets, line twenty-nine on page one seventy-eight. Gets into parks where, where street division is very heavily equipment-based, parks is very heavily project-based. If you're interested in when a trail is coming to a neighborhood near you or a project of that nature, that's where you're going to find it depicted there. All the way down through police and fire, and then it gets into the enterprise funds. And I will say this, I am a, an individual that has a lot of knowledge about of, a little knowledge about a lot of stuff, not a whole lot of knowledge about stuff that goes in-depth on things. So if you want to get into the weeds, probably have to call upon others to, to weigh in. The, the CHAF portion, which, the road repair has obviously been a, a topic of discussion as of last few years. In your packet there on page one seventy-eight, I believe, you'll see the, the CHAF allocation. And for the viewers at home or in the crowd, if you're interested in the street projects that are listed throughout the community, that's where those are. Believe there's two pages of that before we get into the, the final somewhat, the modified version of the C I P, which is by funding source, not necessarily by division, which the first portion of it is, but by funding source. It'd be from council priority dollars, assessments, federal and state grants, other government funds. So that was a request based, I believe, on your request last year, councilman? And that, ladies and gentlemen, is the C I P. What questions do you have about it? There's a lot to this. It's a big document, it's the, the tip of the iceberg when it comes to the financial realms, so just because it's depicted here nice and neat and clean, there is a whole bunch of other spreadsheets, a whole bunch of other involvement that gets factored in with this. Now, this works best when, if, if fire chief says, I need a, a new piece of equipment because of whatever, it works best if we can project that out ten years or as far as possible. We have problems when, we have financial problems when we plunk it in one year out, two years out, because there's only so much capital that's available, and if something needs to be dropped in right now, something else probably has to suffer somewhat depending on funding source. Staff or anybody else have any questions, comments about that? Otherwise, this would be your C I P presentation for this year.
Well, I think that's a good summary of what the C I P represents. Fair to say that it operates more or less as a guidepost for staff as they put together yearly budgets, making sure that we're keeping track of needed larger expenditures projected out for multiple years.
That's exactly right. It's like I said, it's not chiseled in stone, just like, just like the budget. When that gets approved, it's what can be purchased, not necessarily what will be purchased. There's things in the budget that we don't purchase all, all the time. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Val.
Steve, on, Lyle, Steve, whoever wants to answer, but on page one seventy-eight, when they're talking about the flood control recertification.
Yep. What question do you have? So let's give everybody a second to get there.
One seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight. Okay, so one seventy-eight and, actually, it starts on one seventy-seven at the very bottom.
Okay.
Line twenty-eight, flood control recertification. I'll let Steve go in-depth in a little bit here, but I do want to touch on that. That is a high-dollar thing. There's a lot of expense that goes along with that when you think it is just dirt, basically, with a trail on top. However, what a lot of community doesn't necessarily realize, maybe some, but that pile of dirt keeps a quarter to a third of the community from having to pay flood insurance. And that flood insurance is not having to be paid because of the certification that goes along with this. And it was in twenty nineteen that that got pressed to the limit. So every year, or every year or so, that gets inspected from multiple governmental agencies, that checks the box, and it falls in the street division, and they go out and they look at the gopher holes and the, the trees and the, the trees that shouldn't be growing there, or the building encroachment, or whatever it is, that keeps the integrity of that structure, that pile of dirt, basically, the way it is, so that when twenty nineteen happens again in five hundred years, hopefully, that the same thing happens. And it's, it's one of those deals where those guys have to go out and deliver the message that, hey, you can't plant your tree here, but it's not those, they're enforcing the rules that are bestowed upon the city based on the state and federal government requirements to keep that thing in place. So it's very easy for the street division or city staff to be blamed for, oh, why can't I have this shed here, this tree in this place? Well, twenty nineteen is exactly why you don't want those there, because of any damage to the integrity of the structure that can come about. Does, do you have anything to add, Stephen? Or do you, did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, but so every year, we have to allocate, so this year, four hundred and thirty-six thousand. Does federal dollars come into play there, Steve, or do we shoulder all that?
They're, they're all our dollars. Yeah. No, there's no federal participation in that.
So in twenty twenty-five, we need to have six point eight, is that right?
Correct. And those would be levy, levy bonds.
Other questions?
And Lyle, if you could just kind of explain for general, public, the difference between those general funds and the enterprise funds?
Sure. So the general fund would be basically an enterprise fund. If you think about it, an enterprise fund is something you pay for the service of. If you go out to the transfer station and you dump a load of shingles, you're paying for that service. If you have a water bill, if you have a sewer bill, you're paying for that service, that, that money goes back into that fund to buy the equipment, but bring the water out of the ground, replace pumps, and so on and so forth. So generally, if it's a, a service you pay for, it's an enterprise fund that is operated that way in essence, like a business. General fund would be police, fire, library, admin, housing, street division, parks. Would be general fund. Great question. Others?
Okay. Thank you, Val.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
The C I P plan slash budget.
State your name, please.
Jim McKenzie, excuse me. The C I P plan slash budget shows approximately twenty-two point two million dollars of new debt being issued by the city. This brings total city debt to approximately sixty-four million dollars at the end of the coming fiscal year. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, total city debt was approximately twenty-two million dollars. Debt has now almost tripled in three years. The C I P also shows an additional planned issuance of seventeen million dollars of new debt in twenty-four, twenty-five, bringing total city debt to approximately eighty-one million dollars. This could change somewhat depending upon payments against existing debt or additional unforeseen debt issuance. The city debt is rising extremely quickly. Reasons are becoming, are basically because of our borrowing and our existing spending decisions. It's not to be taken lightly. It seems like the city has funds for a Chevy, but always wants to buy a Cadillac or Lexus. I don't believe any of you would be comfortable with your personal debt rising at such an astronomical rate. Lastly, the C I P includes a new sewer lift station that your own analysis says is not necessary, and will cost the citizens of Norfolk at least fifteen million dollars in increased sewer rates over a twenty-year bond issuance. I hope there will be additional discussion about the necessity and cost of that before this money is spent and debt issued. I also noticed on the capital improvement plan, there's six hundred and one thousand dollars of council priority dollars under the park category that's unspecified. Why not use that for public safety and reduce your debt issuance for public safety? There's also one point six million dollars of unspent landscaping dollars. Does it make sense to borrow money for ten, twenty years when you've already got those dollars available? That's almost two point two million dollars. Why not use that for your public safety needs this year instead of issuing debt? Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now?
Good evening. Rod Wilkie, twenty-four oh one Hardison Drive. You can tell by looking at me that I'm twenty-five years plus senior of all of you here. And there's a lot of folks in this community just like me. We moved here thirty-one years ago, and in that time period, these last four or five years, I have never, never seen a city spend money like this city is doing. And it comes on the backs of people like me. I don't know how many people out here are over six-figure incomes, but we've got over, what, three hundred thousand right at this table with wages and benefits plus. That's just two people in the city. And I'm asking you who were voted in to take care of the residents of this city, to have some responsibility. In my thirty-one years here, I have never, and I commend all of you. You, you have to be here every week. You're sitting behind this counter here, this wall, and you're committing your time. But in my thirty-one years, I have never had a ward representative on this council invite me to coffee, to a meeting on a weekly basis like you meet here. Why can't we express our voice to our councilmen? I'm in Ward Two. Shane, Frank, and all of you other ward representatives, councilmen, could do the same thing, to hear our voice. We are being crushed by the expend, expenditures of this city. And a lot of million dollars have gone into a project in a drainage ditch over here that could have been well-spent in other areas of this city. But it's a pet project. But it's a pet project. And there is no need for it. Two million dollars was promoted and advertised in the paper a couple of weeks ago. You got a grant for this project in this drainage ditch. Where was the request to put it into this expensive waste system we've got going on out here? We could have had some money transferred there. We need to get rid of, we need water, we need sewer. There's no doubt about it. But the priorities are in the wrong place with this city council and this mayor. And the mayor is driving you. I've been told here at this very counter years ago that you have your own minds. If you have your own mind, that's wrong. You need the mindset of the people that you were voted to represent. And that is not happening in this city. And the expenditures are way out of line from the, from the administration and the streets. We need streets, we need improvements. But you're off-base, people. And we can't bear that burden. I used to raise pigs when we had an acreage. And I had one sow, and I shared this. I'd never attended a school board meeting in my life until a couple of weeks ago. And I shared this same story. I had one sow that, no matter how much I gave her, she consumed it.
Mr. Wilkie, everyone's given five minutes during these public hearings. Your five minutes is up.
Yeah, I know, Mr. Mayor. And that's the problem. You limit people in this community. You, you limit our time. I'm just sharing with you that we have an obese sow with this city, and it needs to be corrected. And you all up here are representing us. You're supposed to be, and not going along with some pet projects.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Anyone else wishing to make comment, please?
You don't like, you don't like to hear this.
We have to run these meetings by rules, sir.
Yeah, it's your rules.
These are rules that have been established by the city council going back decades and decades.
Right. You have become the king that we want.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments.
He can have some of mine. He can have a lot of theirs, too. All right. Unlike him, I've lived in this community for sixty-three years.
Can you tell us your name, sir?
Could you state your name?
Excuse me?
Can you tell us your name, please?
You didn't ask his name.
Yes, we did.
Would you like my name, please? I'd like a little courtesy.
Yes, please.
David Janz.
Thank you.
I'm filling out your sheet so you can find me. All right. I'm in total agreement with him. I've lived in this community almost all my life. Am I boring you, Mr. Mayor? You want to pay attention to what I'm talking about?
I am.
Instead of looking away and all that other body language crap? There you just did it. Pay attention. This city is heading down a hole because of every one of you, and especially you. I don't make a lot of money. I worked fifty years in this community. My taxes are outrageous. I recently filed a complaint about my street. Brilliant. They put a little asphalt in the upper end. Didn't address the problems at all. Now you want to raise taxes. You're taking a park that I grew up going to, turning it into a rock rapids, which isn't necessary. We don't have the water to fill it. And then you're complaining about the flood control, which was built when I was here because I was around for that flood. And we're getting the water off that, so we're already diverting it. But you guys need to realize what this is all about and what this community is all about. This is a town. It will never be a city. This isn't San Antonio. You are not going to get a river walk-in. You might check into who owns Hennington's. My dad was a federal meat inspector there for his whole life. You think you're going to buy them out? They could buy this town out with pocket change. You guys need to grow up and realize what's important. And you know what's important? None of you, all of them. How am I doing on time, Mr. Mayor?
You've, you're at one minute fifty-five seconds.
It's about one minute fifty-three at this point. Again, I spent my whole life helping this community. Four years in the scouting program, doing everything that was right, helping fix this community. You guys are destroying. Grow up, forget your pet projects, put the money where it needs to be, respect the people that live in it that are supporting you and paying your bills. Got it? I owe you my time to someone else. Grow up.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now?
Uh, my name is Sasha Bone. I am resident of Norfolk. I just had a couple of questions regarding the budget before I go into a couple of things. The A, B, C of urgent, necessary, and desirable of how they're ranked, and I don't know who answers. How do you guys determine, like, do you guys know what the percentage of each of A, B, and C are? Do you have an overall view of that? Of how you determine that and what percentages you have?
No, not necessarily a percentage, probably like you're looking for exactly of twenty-five percent gets A and fifty percent, unless you know off the top of your head. That priority is based on a couple of things. We weigh heavily upon what the division heads say. This is, this piece of equipment is important. Yes, we need to have it replaced right away because it's project contingent or whatever else. It could also be something where we say, from an elected official standpoint, we know the priorities, where the CIP team goes, we want you to have this piece of equipment or this project, and as such, we'll designate it an A or a C. Could answer your question?
Yeah, you might need one more, though.
Right on me.
Sorry. So one of the other things, I have been up here before. I'm sure you guys remember me. I would like to know, maybe from a budget standpoint, one of the things that I really do appreciate about the city of Norfolk and the different divisions that we have, how much would you say on our budget that we're getting from grants thus far? Could you do a rough estimate of grants versus what we're spending as a city out of our budget, is my question?
Do you have other questions? And give me just a second to talk about that. You continue.
Okay. So one of the things that I just recently heard is all of them. I am one of them, and here's the thing, is I'm kind of the opposite. COVID hit us as a city very, very hard with revenue decrease. And unfortunately, when we have a revenue decrease, we can't spend money. I can tell you, like, yes, I have my priorities. Number one for this city, we need to worry about our streets. I'm telling you, like, and yes, I'm familiar with the streets and some of that stuff, but here's the thing, is if we don't do it now, you're going to look at probably triple the amount to redo an entire road versus just doing the fixes that we need now to get moved forward. I am all in support of getting our streets met. Another thing, do I agree that we're a town and not a city? We are a smaller municipality. I agree with that, but that doesn't mean that we can't grow. We need growth in this town. We need the infrastructure to get companies to come in. I was here how many months ago talking about daycare? People aren't coming because we don't have daycare. People aren't coming because we don't have jobs. We need things in this community to make our town, if that's what you want to call it, stand out. In order to do that, we need to spend some money. And that's why I asked, like, where do we get the A, B, and C? Is that something that we can look at as finding out, how do you guys make those decisions? Because I think that's going to be an important aspect to look at. The other thing I wanted to make note of, too, and just tell me when I'm running out of time. Why can't we express our stuff to our city council members? Why can't a ward, I've never been invited by a ward to invite me to coffee or a meeting. If I need something, I'm going to ask you guys. I think it's a two-way street. Whatever we need to hear and express to you, we have these meetings to do this. We have your guys' email. Everything's outlined that we can contact you if we need anything. And I'm sure that I may be getting glares from the back, and that's okay, because that's what this is about, is having a conversation. And I think that's where it steps in, is having a conversations and not letting our emotions drive us, but having a very logical response to, okay, this is where the budget is at, this is where the income, this is the revenue, these are the expenses, and just having priorities. And what I would like to say, and I would, and I think others would agree, maybe, is maybe a little bit more transparency. But here's the thing, I can also be calling one of you guys, too, and saying, hey, give me some more information on this. And you guys would do it. And I think everybody needs to be mindful of that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes.
So to answer her question, no, we don't have a great breakdown on what, how much money is grant-based, federal, state, private grant-based. However, in the CIP, along as we were talking about the funding sources, across the top, there are a couple places that are not necessarily property tax or sales tax-based, and they're depicted with an FA, federal and state grants, or other funds. Then, of course, that's at the top of each of the pages. At the end of the general fund, so on page, well, actually, one seventy-nine, not necessarily at the end of general fund, but you'll see where it says state and federal grants, and it has a dollar amount, so this is line one, perhaps on fire. State and federal grants, four point three, almost four point four million that's available there. And each of the funds after that, the enterprise funds, if it's applicable, will have that funding source. So it's, it's there. It's not broken down how nice and neat and clean, like you're asking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will move to close the hearing and please come forward.
Jan Haberman. And I have to agree with everyone who said about transparency. When it was pointed out to me in a editorial in a newspaper that this city is borrowing the amount of money they have been for the last few years and continue to do this, I was appalled. Who works a budget like that? No family can borrow that much money every year and never pay it off. It's like running up credit cards. There is tax, the money has to be paid back plus interest. And I've heard comments by our mayor that we want young people to come back to our city and stay here. And who wants to come to a city who is just loaded with bonds to pay? Or, you know, it's like me going and borrowing of money to pay, like a credit card, and I never have the money to pay it back. You're never going to have the money to pay it back. Why didn't you, and I'd like an answer for this, why didn't you ask for, to increase the, your levy? The amount, go over your budget and ask for that? That would be transparency. I know that, okay, you need more money. And we, and I think, then I would have, well, what do you need more money for? I'd come and ask question. When I don't ever hear anything that there's a problem, you know, if I never say, hey, I need, I've got this great debt, can somebody help me? Is anybody ever going to come and help me? No, no one. You need to be that transparency. But who borrows that kind of money? I just like, we can't live like that. Every year, it's compounding. It's not, and interest rates have gone up. It's not only going to be our, us paying, it's going to be our children and our grandchildren, and probably our great-grandchildren at the rates you're borrowing. It's never going to end. It can't end. People who borrow that much money on a credit card finally make a deal with them, and they get, and find help to, and they have to cut their budgets, like, down to nothing so they just get the bare bones because they've got to get that paid off. And this city will come to that point. If we go in like this, it won't be in my lifetime. But it sure will be in my children's and my children's. And in fact, I'm kind of thinking I might like to move someplace else that doesn't have all this debt. It just doesn't, it's, you can't, you can't keep doing it. And then the thing is, there's, where do you ask the taxpayers? There's no asking a taxpayer, what do you think of this? When you tried to, when you had, on the last election, you had a bond issue. The taxpayers told you what they thought of that, that bond. They did, were not in favor of borrowing, oh, that was twenty-five million, I think? To, and, and we knew what we were going to spend it on. I, I think part of that was that it came at the last minute. We didn't have time. Again, no transparency. You want to do this, you want to do what? So we just like, we need to, we're, we're, we are people who, who balance their own budgets. You know, I remember when I was young and had children, and my husband was putting money away in the bank, and I'm like, I sure could have spent that on, then I had five kids. Shh. I, I really had, especially, I had to watch my budget and not overexceed it. And now I'm thankful I've got some money in the bank, but I'd like to spend it on me and my family and not pay it all on taxes. I see how my taxes have gone up. The last year, it was six point two. You know, when you, when the property tax, property evaluations are increased? I understand that you need to do that once in a while, but when you do it, last year, six point two? And this year on mine, it was twelve percent. And I was at the school board. They said it was sixteen something overall. They were going to get sixteen percent more revenue because of the property tax, because the property was increasing value. How much are you getting over? What kind of money is coming in? They told us, I haven't looked at the budget. I, I tried to look, I really did. I was spent. I talked to somebody. It wasn't neither of you two gals. It was another, very, very kind ladies who tried to help me out.
Right at about five minutes. I think a lot of the questions that you brought up here will be addressed in a budget presentation that the city administrator is about to give, when that item comes up, or two or three items down the agenda. So we, we thank you for your comment, but a lot of the statements about debt and spending will be addressed during that time. Still a public hearing. If anyone else wishes to make comment, they can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one else. We'll move to close the hearing and proceed to item nineteen and look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifty-seven adopting the twenty, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-three capital improvement program, which includes the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight one and six-year plan for street improvements.
I will offer consideration resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifty-seven adopting the twenty twenty-four dash twenty thirty-three capital improvement program.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Before we vote, I didn't mark on anything. I'll read the planning commission report. I have merged that on yours.
Oh, okay.
On September sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the city of Norfolk twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-three capital improvements program, which included the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight one and six-year street improvements program. Planning Commission recommends approval of the capital improvement program with a five to zero vote.
Thank you, Brianna. Now we need discussion, council, before a vote on the CIP.
I'd just like to make a comment that this CIP is, is really a lot of work put in by Lyle and staff that it's a, it's a outline of how we try to budget things. It isn't the actual budget, it's, it's how we have to prioritize different things. And again, as the department heads are having the most input on this thing, you know, that's, that's their job, that's what they're paid to do and to prioritize. And if, if they need to prioritize one thing over another, that's, that's the responsibility we give them. And I think it's pretty well laid out, how they, how they've outlined it here. And seems pretty, pretty consistent, so just wanna make that comment.
Thank you, councilman. Any other discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2023-57 is adopted.
Okay, that takes us to our regular agenda and back to item number 10. Look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for a request for qualifications from engineering firms for professional services for municipal energy distribution system.
Offer for consideration of approval to advertise for a request for qualifications. Second.
Okay, motion second. And for a little background on this, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and council, we currently have agreements with NPPD to manage our distribution system as well. We have an agreement with them to purchase power. Our agreement for management of our distribution system terminates, I believe, January 1st of 2031. Ahead of that, if we desire to pursue something outside of that and not renew an agreement, we need to let NPPD know that within a five-year, five years ahead of that. So that timeframe would be approaching us. What this document does, this is a request for qualifications for an energy consultant to come in and assist us in renegotiating that agreement and then also understanding at a very basic level what our options would be should we be unsuccessful in negotiating an agreement with them. Once an RFP, so individuals or corporate companies that would be interested in this, engineering companies, energy companies, would submit qualifications, they would tell us where they've done this in the past, tell us about the individuals that they would propose to work with us. We would either be able to select one of those companies, one of the respondents to this, and negotiate that service. Or if we had several respondents to this and wanted to bring in two or three for interviews, we could certainly do that as well. So this in and of itself is not committing us to anything other than going out and asking for qualifications, reviewing those qualifications. Should we select somebody to move forward with a, a study or to assist us with negotiation services, there would be a, a contract that would come back for discussion and approval at that time.
Thank you, Steve. So this agenda item simply allows us to move forward with putting out a request for qualifications to see who responds?
That's, that's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, any discussion on this?
Jim McKenzie, I asked for this to be pulled off just to have some discussion to understand it a little bit better. Do we have an anticipated cost of this study? Do we have any clue what we're thinking about?
We have budgeted 50,000 for this.
50,000, so that is budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. And then I also noticed in the agreement that it calls for increasing the lease payment to the city from 12% to 14%. So you're asking for an extra 2% tax on the citizens for the electricity?
So within about, well, NPPD has been renegotiating their agreements with all of their customers. And we have a copy of what that agreement looks like. And when, when a customer signs up for that new agreement, there is a rider or option in there. It's a municipal rider option that allows the council, should they wish, to increase that. This has nothing to do with that other than, you know, we would be bringing this consultant to the table to assist us in negotiating, you know, the, the next pro-agreement with NPPD.
But your RFQ actually states that it would allow for increasing that lease payment. So that wouldn't be in the RFQ if you weren't planning on that or thinking about that?
Again, that is, when we, when we would sit down with NPPD and start to negotiate with them on their standard agreement. Within that standard agreement, there is a clause called municipal rider. And that municipal rider does allow, again, council would have to make, make, you know, that would have to be presented to council and they would have to decide to do that. But that rider agreement within their new pro-agreement does allow that. Again, this is strictly bringing a consultant to the table.
I understand what this is, but that's why I wanted to bring this up for discussion. It does actually say in here that it would potentially increase it from 12 to 14. So I just think the public needs to have some heads up on that before it gets farther down the road, so.
Correct, and, yeah. And like I say, if, if we go down that path, that would be a conversation with council, and that would be a public conversation as well.
Have you already had that discussion with NPPD about increasing that?
No. We've talked about what the options of the rider are. We've not talked about that as something that we're interested in doing that.
So it, it sounds like they've already, you know.
Yeah.
The, the agreement that they've already provided to you has an allowance of increasing that from 12 to 14%.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other input on item 10? Okay, hearing none, any discussion, council? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item number 20 on the regular agenda. I would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-58 approving the additional 1% increase in restricted fund authority allowed upon the affirmative vote of at least 75% of the council.
I'll make a consideration resolution number 2023-58. Second.
Okay, motion second. For some background description on this, we'll hear from Sheila Reos of our city fiscal office.
Mayor and council, this is a requirement of statutes that you have a separate vote passed by a supermajority if you want to carry forward the additional 1% in restricted funds authority allowed under state law. This won't change our budget in any way this year. We don't need this to meet the lit exemption. It carries forward to future years when we may need it.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Any questions on that?
Sheila, can you say what, what is this? What is, I don't understand it.
Okay, so the state, as part of the budget laws, you can only increase restricted funds. And those restricted funds are things like property tax, sales tax, city highway allocation revenues by a certain amount each year. Two and a half percent in the, just standard growth. And then you can increase an additional 1% with a supermajority vote. And then that allows it for future years. If it need, if you would need to increase property tax, you have more room to do so.
Our property tax is projected to go down, correct?
Our property tax levy is going down this year, yes. The property tax amount is going up. And this looks like, this looks at the property tax amount.
Any further questions or discussion?
The property tax that's going up is assessed by the county, correct? By evaluation?
Yes, the county sets the valuations. And the city decides, decides the levy rate.
And the levy, and we decided to move the levy to reduce the levy?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arns, McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Lawson, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Webb. Resolution 2023-58 is adopted.
Okay, takes us to item number 21. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5849 approving the fiscal year 2023 to 24 appropriations. Approving the fiscal year 2023 to 24 proprietary budget and approving the strategic, strategic plan.
I'll offer consideration ordinance number 5849 approving fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Okay, motion second. For this and the next couple items, I would look to Andy Colvin, our city administrator, to give us some background and rehash the budget presentation that was presented to the community in last year's, or last week's public budget hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, I'm never one to deny a special request, so if we have a request to see my presentation all over again, I'm, I'm happy to show it. Brianna, you wanna?
Can we pull it up?
Get me hooked up up there, please? I have mine hooked up here. Hopefully it'll switch over. All right, so let's start it. Okay. Well, I'll run through this again here and go through some of the, the major highlights of this coming fiscal year budget. The total citywide budget increase is 12.67%. I think there was a question here a little bit ago, comparison to where the school budget was. But that's the citywide budget, so that is not general fund. That is all funds that we have. So that also includes your water, sewer, solid waste, all, all the funds are included in that number. Primarily due to debt issuance for street improvements, water treatment plant upgrades, and a collector well in the West Plant. And then the WPC grit removal and plant upgrades as well at the, at the water pollution control plant. The proposed budget includes a 1, 1.12 cent property tax levy reduction and includes a 3.5% cost of living adjustment for city employees. The budget also includes a $5 million bond issued for street projects utilizing existing revenue sources. So this is one that the council directed staff to prepare a $5 million bond that would be paid for with existing revenue. So even with the levy reduction, we were able to put some things aside and, and find money to pay for that bond. We can't do 5 million in one year as far as engineering and design work. So we're gonna split this out over a couple of years. So this next fiscal year, we'll be looking at about 2.5 million and then we'll, we'll do another 2.5 million for the other half in subsequent years. The budget makes progress toward also restoring the 16% general fund balance. That has been an ongoing goal for the council for several years. We did achieve that here a year or two ago, and then we did pay the debt off on this building, which reduced that fund balance. But we are making some progress this coming fiscal year to restore that back to about almost 14%. Total expenditure comparison, this is a chart that breaks down that 12, 12.5% you'll see of that percentage increase. You've got 2.5% increase for personnel, 9.5% increase for operations and maintenance, just under 2% for capital expenditures, debt service 31%, which again, we can break down what that debt all includes. And then fund ending balance at going up 50%. And again, that's all funds of the city. That's not just general fund. So the history of the total budget for this coming fiscal year, we're looking at just over 133 million. And you can see a chart there comparing the last several years going back to 2014 and 15. Feel free to tell me to stop or slow down if anybody has any questions. So now we're gonna look at the general fund. So this is how the, our general fund is, where the funding sources come from. Primarily, you'll see the blue there is sales tax. So just over 40% of our entire general fund is funded by sales tax. You'll see about 4.7 million for the NPPD lease. 5.8 million for the property tax, and then other revenue is 6.5 million. Sales tax revenue trends, you can see as our number one source, we like to see this chart going up. And more purchasing, more business and, and development happening in town drives this number. So we want to continue to see that, because that does help offset our need to rely on other sources of, of taxes and revenue. So the stronger our sales tax is, the better our position is overall financially. And you can see this year, we're looking at about 11.6 million in sales tax revenue coming in. So we've exceeded the funding that did come in here a few years ago for the library. So sales tax is coming in very well, and we're very happy about that. NPPD lease, you see a one increase in there. That was an adjustment for how they made payments. So that was a one-time increase we saw that one fiscal year. Other than that, it's been relatively flat, as NPPD has seen no rate increases. And I don't believe they're planning any rate increases coming up in the foreseeable future. So really, any growth you'll see is due to growth of the system, so increased electrical load, either by annexations or by new development. This is our CHAF fund. This is just a, I, I put this in here so you can see a trend going back by about 10 years for how our CHAF fund has, has moved forward. As you can see, it hasn't grown that exponentially, but we have seen some growth overall in the last 10 years. Assessed valuation increase, this is based where our tax levy comes from. And that's at 8.3% that we did get. Originally, we did budget to have a 6% increase in valuation, but it actually came in at 8%. So that did help us drive that levy down a little bit more than what we had initially planned. Levy rate comparison, and I'm gonna touch on one thing here, because a comment, a, a question and a comment was made at the last meeting about our airport levy, which would change this number. So I'll explain what that airport levy is. But here you can see, this is just the city levy. So this is the tax levy that we see going into the city general fund. Our overall city levy, and how that's broken down here for this, for the city budget. As far as the airport levy goes, Norfolk is, is, I'd say, a little more unique in how we have our airport structured. A lot of cities you'll see that are our size, you know, Columbus, I'm trying to think of some other ones, Scotts Bluff and those, and even Carney. I don't think they are, what's that? They're, they, they're not structured the same way. The Norfolk Airport has its own elected board, the airport authority. They are all elected. So while the city council does exercise control over their levy request and their amount, you don't have control over their budget. They have their own hearings, they can adopt their own policies, they can, they can spend their own funds independently. So their budget is not included in the city budget. So therefore, we don't then include that as part of a comparison to other cities, because we don't see it as being an apples-to-apples comparison. Although the taxpayer would see that on their, their tax bill. So in that sense, it is, but it is not something that the council exercises control over that other than just setting their levy amount. So I hope I provide some clarification as to why we don't include that in this, in this chart. Property tax overview, this is one we include just to, to show Property tax overview, this is one we include just to, to show where, where the, where the property tax dollar goes. You'll see the yellow chart there, that's about fifteen percent of somebody's property tax bill goes to the city. So on a hundred thousand dollar home, that'd be just over three hundred dollars a year would come to the city in property taxes. This is expenditures by division. You can see, obviously, public safety, like you'll see in most budgets, is, is the highest part of that. Then you'll see just over, just under thirteen percent for an ending balance, and then you have administration, street maintenance and parks and rec that make up a majority of the rest of that. Enterprise fund expenditures, so this would be your water and sewer funds, this would also be your solid waste. Most of that funding we get overall, over sixty percent of it does go towards capital, capital improvements. With personnel in that amount only being just over twelve percent this next fiscal year. So bonded and, this is our bonded debt comparison that Norfolk would have for other cities. So as you can see, the first blue line, you'll see just Norfolk, that's where we are today. And then you'll see with the adoption of this budget, as of ten, one of twenty-three, that stays relatively the same. And then you'll see that increase, and that's for the end of this next fiscal year we're going into, and then again, the following fiscal year. So you will see that drive up. Is there any questions on this chart? Based on today, we are in about the middle of the pack for cities in our, in our debt that we've got. Historical bonded and debt incidents as well, we'll look at the yellow, that is our general obligation bonds in today's dollars. You'll see that spike up in two thousand ten, that was for the improvements that the city made to Memorial Field and the construction of Aqua Venture Water Park. Then you'll see that trend down, and then we've seen that come back up. Most of that yellow, vast majority of it is streets that we've put money into, with the rest of it being flood control and public safety.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
Can you say that part again? I think that's a pretty important point.
So the, the bonded debt that you see, how we're trending back up, a vast majority of that is for streets. Benjamin is in that.
Large projects like Benjamin that have been talked about going back to two thousand ten, but were never done.
Correct.
Brash Avenue.
Yep, Eighth and Michigan. The work we see being done, so the Mill and Overlay that we've got, that's not included in this. That's a part of our annual street maintenance that we do by contract, so that'll include concrete repairs that you'll see on Eldorado, the First Street by the middle school, and then the Mill and Overlay. Those were all brought in as part of our annual street maintenance by contract. Back?
Sure.
Yep.
So I see Hastings is down there at the bottom. Is that just the city workings or is that including the, their utilities and more public works that they have?
This is everything, I believe Sheila can break down that into more detail.
So this is what they report to the state, so what, what is on their budget form for their city, that's what they reported. So if their utilities, I, I guess in Hastings' case, I don't know if the utilities would have a separate budget or if that is included on the city. But we looked at just the, their city budget.
And Andy, we'll stick there for just a second. We heard comments about the Riverfront Project and Johnson Park. How does that interplay with any of the debt levels?
So the components of that project, I believe, were just the bridge, was, was included as part of our bond with Benjamin and Michigan and Eighth. So that, because it was integral to the, to the overall project, it, it had to be done. That the spillway and the bridge was all one structure, as I understand. I'm not an engineer, so I can't speak to that in detail, but my understanding was that was all part of that one structure. So it all had to go in order to make the rest of it happen. So, but the bridge that we have today is much safer, it will last. Steve, how long do we anticipate the bridge on First Street will last, based on how it's built today's standards?
It should go sixty to eighty years without any rehab, probably some rehab around then and then another twenty to thirty years.
So we have a much better bridge also that, that we have as a result of that.
So of that total project cost, only a, a portion of that ties into anything that might, may have been bonded, and that's the, the bridge replacement.
Yeah.
And that comes from our, our CHAF funds, which goes to streets. I will note that the other portions of that project have been budgeted for and paid for within parks funds. Partnerships that were created with the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District, grants that were obtained from the state of Nebraska, and then private fundraising.
Correct.
Were about two-thirds of the total funding for that project and one-third related to the streets, bridge replacement that you just noted.
So this is, this is a highlight of our bonded, this is just for general obligation bonds. I don't need to go any more into this, but if there's anything you want to ask specifically about that. So this shows you the different breakdowns of special assessment bonded debt, revenue bonds. Revenue bonds, so the gray, that would be your utilities, your water sewer, solid waste, your special assessment bonds, which would be those that the city, if we have any subdivision or new project going in, we would assess those projects, issue the debt, and then we'd use those assessments as they're paid to pay that back. And then you have your general obligation bonds as well. And again, majority of that is for, for streets and infrastructure in the blue. So looking ahead, just to highlight some major projects that we've got, looking forward to. Again, I apologize, if I would have known I was going to do this again, I would have made the font bigger, so, but that hasn't been done yet. So street maintenance and construction, so one point two million, I'll highlight that, that's annual street maintenance contract work. That is outside of the two and a half million dollars of the five million dollars bond that we're, we're looking at, at issuing. So that is something we do every single year. We have some more work that will come in, and this really just means that there's, the work's being done or it's being paid for in this next fiscal year. So we will have some more wrapping up on Benjamin as well as Michigan. That two and a half million, you'll see that as community decided street repair. That is something we want to engage the community on to tell us what streets that they think need to be prioritized, and that will be taken to council to make the ultimate decision. You'll see two hundred thousand for microseal and armor coating, some work on Prospect and Oak. You'll see a grant for Safe Streets For All, that's phase one. And then you'll see some miscellaneous paving, and that's in new developments. So that's, that's what we anticipate we'll see this coming year. Water sewer infrastructure, and I'll touch on a couple of these that I have, a star by. West Water Treatment Plant upgrades, which includes a storage tank and a collector well for five point six million. Three and a half million also for the WPC grit removal building improvements. Then we'll have some sewer replacement at Fourth and Monroe to two thousand Logan, that's one point one million. So the next two, you'll see that, that was mentioned here at the beginning when we were talking about our CIP. That one point nine million for the Omaha Avenue Lift Station, as well as that one point one million for the Highway Thirty-five Interceptor. I put stars there because those projects are included in the budget. But as of today, right now, we do not have a funding source for those. So we don't have a funding source, the projects don't happen. The council wanted to look at water and sewer rates separately from the other fees, we've had those discussions. So what's going to be happening here over the next month or so is we're going to schedule a meeting, a special meeting for our consultants to come in and review the city's water and sewer master plans to get you and the public better educated on what all that means, what's the long term, what's the short term. And then, then after that, you will have a resolution considering, or an ordinance, excuse me, considering raising water and sewer rates. So it would be at that time or through that process that you determine whether or not you'd want to fund these. But we did include them in here so that should you choose to raise rates to fund them, you had the flexibility to do that. So I just wanted to clarify that for, for the council and the public. And then we'll move on to some other work that we've got, administration, public safety and flood control. We are working through some more for four hundred and thirty-eight thousand is what we anticipate for more, the flood col, flood control recertification. Some funding there for the police division roof, as well as the fire station, and then some new windows for the admin building. And then under Parks Recreation Trail Development Landscape Master Plan, some additional funds that we'd be looking forward to for the Johnson's Park project, as well as Tazuka team lockers that we'll be seeing there, which a large portion of that is funded by private donation, as well as partnerships with the school and the college. Some other items and changes, we did eliminate the assistant seat administrator and the management analyst positions in the general admin budget. We did add an HR director. Changing again to have an HR director, so we will not have those other two positions, but we did add an HR director. We changed two police officer positions to full-time CSL positions. I think that's an idea that Chief Miller had in order to help with some of our, help alleviate some of the, the, the understaffing issues that they've got, to have some CSLs and non-sworn officers come in and help with, with some of the things that maybe, you know, would, would help alleviate the, the work burdens that you have for some of our officers, and they can do some other things. Under public works, we did add one full-time employee to the street maintenance crew. We have funding there for asset management, some equipment for the street division, as well as the fleet, fleet division, parks and rec pickup, skating equipment and concessions trailer, some funding for Central Park irrigation, as well as the purchase of additional three patrol cars, which we do on an annual rotation for those. I'll just run through ARPA here. We did have in here eighty thousand, and that's for the senior center HVAC, which the council discussed and, and has given verbal approval, so this would approve that ultimate allocation. We did have some ARPA funds go towards a WPC grit removal project, as well as some ADA and security upgrades for City Hall. New pool heater for Aqua Venture, as you remember, one, they have reached, they are past the, their life expectancy. So one had to be replaced this last year, so we're going to be proactive and get another one to replace the other one, as that could go anytime. We have some funding for a fire station restroom and then some network battery backup replacements. Long-term financial plan outlook, this is one where we can, we compare our tax levy, which is in orange, to the blue, which is fund balance. It shows a direct correlation, the, the greater you see that fund balance go up, you see your levy rate drop. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. And we have a, a team here that I think can help answer anything you might want to know.
Any questions for Andy? Andy, I appreciate you running through that again. You made this presentation last week at the budget public hearing, but I thought it was important to do so again tonight, given some of the discussion that we had earlier. And important to lay out the facts of the matter regarding the city's fiscal position. I've, I've been somewhat concerned, bothered by the fact that I believe a false narrative has been propagated here by some in the community that the city is experiencing out of control spending, or that the city's drowning in debt, I've heard those things. And while we certainly welcome citizens here to express opinions, and that even includes making disparaging remarks and calling us names, that doesn't also mean that you're entitled to your own set of facts. And it doesn't mean that you're immune to being challenged as to the accuracy of the things you say on, on this public platform. So to that end, I just wanted, in addition to that presentation, to make a few points here regarding where the city of Norfolk is and how we tax citizens and how we spend tax dollars. Because I, I heard tonight that people, certain people feel crushed or taxed to death. Well, here's the, the city's position and all of that. As you've just seen in that presentation, we do in fact have one of the lowest property tax levity, levies, third lowest to be exact, of all cities in the state of Nebraska. And Andy explained the airport authority component of that. Number two, our current debt levels, while higher admittedly in recent years to help pay for needed infrastructure improvements. Some of those, by the way, that have been put off for decades, are in fact lower than many of our peer communities, including Columbus, Carney, Fremont and Papillion. Number three, we're currently not exercising any local option sales tax, unlike many of our peer communities. We use the local option sales tax to pay for library renovation years ago, and it was left to expire when that project was finished. Number four, we're not exercising any occupation tax, which was last used to pay off Memorial Field and Aqua Venture improvements and was paid off early and has not been reinstated since. Number five, we're not exercising any additional lot, local lodging tax, which is very unusual for communities our size in the state. I think it's important to note these things because all of those things add up to the reality that Norfolk maintains one of the lowest overall tax rates of any city in the state. And I think the bottom line of all that is this, I think the city's budgeting responsibly with tax, tax dollars, and this budget, once again, is a responsible and prudent one, and it manages to lower the property tax levy more than a cent, and that's the first time that, 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 that's been done in many years. It's also growth-minded and focused on targeted investments in infrastructure and quality of life projects. And these are the kinds, kinds of investments that will serve citizens well and promote more, more growth in the community. And that growth, as we've seen, broadens our tax base, our sales tax base, which helps us to keep property taxes low. So I do commend the work of the staff and this process, which started seven or eight months ago, so about an eight-month-long process, to get to a place where we're, I think, effectively utilizing tax dollars to help bring about quality services for citizens and grow the city of Norfolk. With that, any further discussion on the budget, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four budget is available for the council?
I'd, I'd like to make one comment about the process. I feel like going into next year, it would be nice to establish the process so we allow ourselves a little more time at the end of the budget process to when we approve it and then it gets passed. All these timetables are so tight, you know, and so it, it just, it would be, with, people have been coming up and talking about transparency tonight. I feel like if we could expand the time that we use to create the budget, and then when the city initially presents the budget to council, if that could be bumped up by at least one month, I think that would allow more discussion among staff and council and allow more feedback in from the general public to the council on what they want to see within that budget. And I think we wouldn't feel so rushed when we get to the end. I'm not saying I feel rushed today, but, you know, it, there's been times in years past where it feels rushed because it's got to be approved, because it's got to be on the state's, your budget's got to be approved and sent in, and, you know, just, and I know that the county doesn't approve the mill levy until like August thirtieth. So that does change things a little bit for us, but I think if this, if this process could just be kind of, if you just took it from here, it would have backed a month, and then you could allow a little more time when we do the, the actual first, when the budget's initially presented. You know, we had that ten-hour meeting, you know, that meeting could then be split up in a little more time, so it's not such a marathon run, trying to get through it and then allow a little more feedback in that situation also. So that would be my request, putting out there, moving forward. I know this, this has been the way it's been done for, for a long time, I'd imagine. And then I'd also like to look at the tier system, how it's presented. And looking at some of those options moving forward also. Instead of having a one-tier, two-tier, three-tier budget type system, we maybe look at more of a, so, but that's a lot of discussion that I just threw at you guys, but that is stuff, you know, we, you could start talking about now, so next year it's a little different, so.
Okay, thank you, Shane, those are process adjustments that I think warrant more conversation. Any other council discussion?
Sheila, maybe you can speak to this, the extra sales tax dollars, we, the, the sales tax dollars that were not budgeted, so the growth, how much did we collect of that last year and where did that money? how much did we collect of that last year, and where did that money go?
So, are you saying that the sales tax that was over budget?
Yeah.
That exceeded budget?
Yeah, I know.
So, some of that went into preparing this year's budget, because in May, we do an estimate, we look at what we got in the last 12 months, we already saw that we were exceeding budget, so that went into this year's budget, but then we were, the months after May, we were exceeding what we estimated, so that then goes into fund balance. So, some of it is going into funding this budget, and some of it is going into fund balance.
Public input.
Jim McKenzie, couple items on your debt chart. Scotts Bluff is missing off of their first-class city, they have very low debt, not sure why that wasn't included in the comparison. The Carney debt shows very high, I'm not sure where you got your numbers from. I pulled Carney's last financial statement off the internet, and according to their financial statement, their total debt in 2022 was 82 million, so I'm not sure where the 120 came from on that chart. And some of the other numbers on that chart, the Columbus debt is new for their new, part of it's new from their new downtown building, my understanding is 25 million of their debt is serviced by a half percent of their one-and-a-half percent sales tax. The city uses our full one-and-a-half percent sales tax for regular funding, so they have a special funding mechanism for that. And of course, Carney has a much higher population level, so if you figure per capita with the real debt, it's a different picture, and I, we can't just say we don't have a problem. We can't go from 22 million in debt to 64 to 80 and say it's not a problem. You've got to look at reality here. You know, we talk about the third lowest tax levy, you know, you're comparing yourself without the airport to all these other cities that have the airport in their levy. Do you really think that that's being honest with the citizens? You're comparing apples to oranges. You guys have full control over that budget. You say, "We don't control the budget, we just control the levy." Well, the levy controls the budget. You have complete control of that. You guys say what the airport gets and what they don't, and then you decide to leave it out from that comparison. That's just completely misleading to the public.
Would you, Jim, real quick on the airport, would you want to see the airport become part of the city's interaction, like where the board would go away, and then they would just be ran completely by it?
That's a whole nother discussion.
And the city to take on the expenses of the airport as well?
I mean, it's a fair question.
It is a fair question.
It will change.
Should the city take on the expenses of the airport?
Just asking how you'd want to do that.
It's a whole, it's the same thing. I mean, you're going to spend the same amount of money.
Right now, that's a big discussion going on, you know, is the airport need to be on their own, or do they want to be brought underneath the city's arm?
I don't know. It's the same pot of money, whether you allow them to spend it, or whether you put it on your budget and allow it to spend it, it's the same amount of money. So, whether you guys decided to take it over or not, that's a whole nother discussion. I don't want to get into that, that's my five minutes. So, I do want to mention a couple of other things, you know, in terms of, and I talked about this last time, but you had the meeting at noon where hardly anybody could attend, you can see what happens when you have an evening meeting. In this year, you've budgeted a bunch of items that you are using for debt, that you're issuing debt for these items. CHAF for street repair, 2.5 million, warning sirens, 120,000, Fire 1 and Fire 2 roof repair, 425,000, CAT RMS S upgrade, 154,000, police roof repair, 215,000, animal pound, 350,000, in-car video and body camera, 200,000, totals up to $3.9 million, almost $4 million. You're issuing debt for that. Had you actually paid for that out of your current budget, that would increase your levy by 57%. So, you can say we're keeping the levy low, but you're issuing debt to keep it low. That's important.
Should we not do these improvements? And I'm going to-
My point is, if you look at the rest of your budget, you've got $84,000 in there for public art, you've got $1.6 million for landscaping, you've got a whole bunch of things that you could probably cut out and use to prioritize. I'm not saying you shouldn't do things at a priority, these are priority, but what about all the other things? You guys act like there is no way we can cut anything out of that budget, you know? It's like, you know, we need more money, but we don't want to look at our budget and say, "What's really a priority?"
I would find that statement to be false, because we have more than went, put our heads to the table and figured out how we're going to do street improvements, with what is existing.
So, do you really think-
You come up here and point a lot of fingers at a lot of times.
Do you really think you need one point?
No, answer my question.
I don't have to answer anybody's question.
Well, we don't have to answer yours then either.
Now, wait a second.
No, you're not up here. Just let me finish, Mike, just let me finish, okay? We're talking about roof improvements. Do you have an envelope in your, at your house when your roof needs to be replaced?
I save my money, and I budget appropriately for it. I don't go into debt for everything like that.
Okay, so for everything like that? How do you know, we did a good job of paying this building off early.
If I know I need to replace my roof, I'm not going to go spend $50,000 on landscaping in my yard. I'm going to make a choice. Roof's more important.
And, Jim, that's a fair point, that is a fair point, but I would say, when we, just a minute ago, I made a statement about some things we want to do next year for the budget, I think would be, would be more in line with how you're making, what you're stating by limiting the tier-type system, it'll allow the council to see the budget is more of a, won't be like you're just approving your, say, your, the streets, you just don't approve your budget for that year at 3% and move on, it's going to take it more to a bare-bones type budget, where some of the things you're stating would then be able to maybe work in this.
I brought some of these things up in the July budget hearing, but nobody wanted to hear any of it. Nobody wanted to cut a dime out of their budget.
Jim, I think you're affording the fact that the major portions of debt that have been taken on are to pay for big projects, that if we waited for all the money to be in the bank, by the time we had it, those projects would cost two or three or four times more than they would today. Like Benjamin, Steve, what is the total project cost of Benjamin Avenue reconstruction today? Yeah.
18 million.
18 million.
So, let's talk about-
Was there any way we would have been able to save up that money and paid out of pocket for Benjamin Avenue reconstruction, any time in the next, say, 10, 15, 20 years?
So, we looked at that, and what we presented, that was across this region, those capital improvements inflated about 3.84% a year compared to the normal CPI that runs, you know, over history, somewhere around 2%. So, street improvements, infrastructure in general runs up in that 3.84%. At the time, we were able to bond that, I don't have the bond numbers right in front of me, but I believe we were around 3%. So, it made sense to bond it and get it in the ground.
And the revenue that we're using to pay off those bonds comes from a state highway allocation fund?
That's correct.
Money that we receive year to year, correct?
That's correct.
And how long, how much do you think Benjamin Avenue would cost if we waited 10 years to do it?
30% more.
Let's talk about Benjamin Avenue. So, when you built Benjamin Avenue, you made the decision to underground all the utilities at significant expense. You installed high-end decorative light poles, you installed custom-cut fencing, metal fencing, had to be tremendously expensive, you installed an enormous amount of stamped concrete, you installed a lot of expensive landscaping, which was an option on the bid. And so, again, when I go back to that analogy of you can afford a Chevy, but you want a Lexus or a Lincoln Continental or Cadillac, you've got to make those decisions on those projects too. You spend money like, on these street projects, instead of building a street with regular street lights, you build something elaborate, and then you have to borrow more money for that, and then you have to come back and borrow more money again. I'm just trying to get across the point, guys, that you can't build everything to the max and assume you have a bottomless checkbook, you don't, and these citizens out here-
Jim, do you think Brash Avenue is safer today and looks better than it did?
You're just changing the subject, Tom.
No, I think it's relevant, I think it's relevant to what you're talking about here, and it is about how we build things. We build things to last. Part of the problem here is we're having to borrow money, because streets were never built to last in this town historically.
Fancy streetlights aren't making the street any better, fancy cut fencing isn't making the street any better, fancy stamped concrete isn't making the street any better, fancy landscaping isn't making the street-
I would argue they're not the significant portions of cost in those projects, and they bring about community pride. I don't think there's anything wrong with showing a little pride in how our community looks and feels.
There's nothing wrong with community pride, as long as you can afford what you're doing. And so, you've got to be able to afford it, that's my point, guys. I just keep coming up here and saying, you can't say we're quadrupling our debt and say there's no problem. You've got to have some controls on what you're spending, you've got to make choices, and I feel like every time I bring something up, there are no choices, we have to spend it all, and that's it.
And Jim, before you exit, and I would like to redact a statement, it came off my tongue, it was not correct, yes, I do answer to you as a public, but you come up here, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of you're doing this and you're doing this, but we don't, but as a councilman, I would like, I would like to hear a solution as well.
So, I was challenged by Cory for a solution at a meeting, he said, "Well, what do we do?" The answer is, you guys have to control your spending all the way along. I've come up here and said multiple times about things that I didn't think you could afford, that's a long process. So, it's a year later, and we've spent everything that I've said maybe we shouldn't spend. So, my solution is, look at every dang item that you're spending money on, and determine whether that's more important than something else.
Okay.
You know, you guys see me the adversary, and maybe I am an adversary, but I'm just trying to say, I see the city going on a track that I don't think is sustainable, and I'm just trying to bring this up, because I don't want to see the city be in a position that, well, you look at the CHAF budget, look at the CHAF, for instance, if you look out, right now, we're only paying interest only for the first five years on that $20 million we borrowed for that, for the Benjamin Avenue, Michigan project. When we start paying principal and interest on that, look at how many CHAF dollars are left for you to take care of the streets in Norfolk. It's about $1.7 million a year, ongoing. You've spent it all on debt service now, so, and, yeah, you had to fix Benjamin Avenue, but you didn't have to make it elaborate, you've got to do what you can afford to do. Otherwise, you're out of money to continue fixing your streets, you're out of money to continue fixing your streets. It's that, I mean, look at your CHAF budget.
Jim, I don't think it's necessary for us to go back and forth all night on this, but I do think, and I think I'd urge you to be mindful of the fact that investing in infrastructure expansion over recent years has helped accommodate some new growth, that new growth has led to a higher sales tax base, which does help us keep property taxes low, and it helps us not have to focus on those other sources of tax revenues that could very well be increased, or would have to be increased, if we weren't adopting a growth mentality and seeing results from it. So, I don't know if you have a problem necessarily with spending money ever, at all, any time, because I think we can make a case that those investments in infrastructure have helped the city grow, which has helped us increase public, improve public services, and keep the property tax base lower.
First of all, on sales tax, let's talk about sales tax for a second. You had tremendous growth in sales tax, partially because now you can tax online sales, so that happened in the last couple of years. So, when you say growth, a significant portion of that is due to being able to tax online sales, plus you've had tremendous inflation in the last year, so that's increased your sales tax. Plus, you've annexed areas of town, so anything they buy online is now taxed. So, your sales tax is not necessarily growing because you've done anything special, it's also affected by those factors. I'm not saying, we as Norfolk, we want to grow, we want to-
And then it does help, it does help us, I just want to finish this point though, it does help us pay for the services that, that serve a growing community.
We want Norfolk to grow and expand, we want Norfolk to do well, but we've got to do it in a financially, fiscally responsible manner, and when, when I see the projects go on where it looks like there's an endless checkbook, when I see, you know, we can afford community art, we can afford, you know, $1.6 million of landscaping, and we're just borrowing money for it, I say, "Wait a minute, take a step back, let's look at our budget in total and say, 'What can we afford and what can't we afford?'" You know, I talked at the meeting about, "Let's fundraise for the community art, I'm in favor of the community art, but let's fundraise for it." My gosh, we've got hundreds of millions of dollars in this community of wealth, those people will give for that, why do we have to continue to just go to the tax wealth for that stuff?
And while you mention that, I do want to correct, the other day, you said that, like you used the figure $260,000 or some went to public art, that was not true. I mean, $59,000 was dedicated to the Public Arts Council from the CARES Act dollars, and then I think an allotment of $25,000 was given to the city.
What I said-
It was not anywhere close to $250,000.
What I said.
And the landscape master plan, I'll finish this point too, that you've mentioned continually, has not been spent. It was approved by a city council in 2009. It was $1.2 million approved by the council to be spent on corridor beautification in 2009. It's been sitting in our capital improvement program since.
And you're borrowing money to offset it.
No, we're not.
Yes, you are. It's, if you're saying, "I'm going to expend this money in this year's budget," and you don't have to expend it, and you could reduce borrowing, you are borrowing money to offset that. Now, let's go back to the public art. What I said was, you have budgeted $84,000 a year for the last two years and this upcoming year, those added together add up to more than $250,000. Whether you've spent that, I have no idea, I'm just going by what you budgeted, and that's 100% accurate, go look at your budget. Thank you.
Any other public input?
Case you forgot, my name's David Janzner. Mr. Mayor, who do you work for?
I'm not sure that that's relevant to any of this conversation.
I'm asking you a question I'd like to ask.
This is a hearing, and this is a public input session on the city's fiscal budget, so if you can, if you want to comment any further than you already did about the budget, we're welcome to hear that.
First of all, you basically ignored me first time up, your body language tells everything.
I'm sorry, you're very sensitive to that.
No, I'm very aware.
It seems like you're very sensitive to that, sorry about that.
Are you trying to bait me?
No, I'm not.
Gentlemen, let's keep everything on task, guys.
Just hang on, everybody. First of all, this is not the place to be vindictive and go after someone who's trying to look out for the best of the community. It's really not. Second of all, I'm well aware of what's going on, and I support the community because I'm in the community. I think everybody deserves to be treated with respect, not vindictively, like a couple people up here have been tonight. I think you've just now made someone else is going to attend a lot of meetings and pay a lot more attention. Make this community work. And just to clarify and give you the answer, you folks work for us, we voted you in to do our beliefs and make this community right. Don't ever forget that. Never forget that. Eye contact and body language is very important.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Sasha, again, I'm just going to make this really short and sweet this time, is we need to let go of the emotions that are involved in this and get back to what we need to do for the city of Norfolk. It's about growth on all parts. So, one of the things that I mentioned, or that I saw in there, was the schedule, or the circle chart with property taxes and stuff, with the school system, things like that, Carney was one of them. I really look at Carney as a good way to judge and kind of decide where we're at. One of the things I'll share, and I think it's important, because yes, the city does have to work also with the school system. This was actually just from Carney on September 14th, and I'm just going to read it verbatim from them. "If cutting taxes is our priority, our recourse is to cut programs or people. Fewer teachers mean we'd have larger class sizes, fewer programs could include a loss of athletic teams, loss of transportation services, loss of extracurricular activities or extra, right? We cannot have the quality education experiences with high-quality professionals we currently enjoy and cut taxes simultaneously. Those two objectives are polar opposite, and I think we can learn from that when it comes to our city as well. If you guys, if our community, if there's community members that want to cut taxes, we have to look at the recourse from that. We're going to lose programs, we're going to lose people. Everybody that I've heard, even those that are objective to the, you know, object the budget and the spending and things, we all want Norfolk to grow, that's what I'm hearing. There are proven facts, if you cut taxes, programs are going to leave, people are going to leave, and we're not going to grow." That's all I have.
Thank you, Sasha. Anyone else wishing to make comment on this? Thank you, Sasha. Anyone else wishing to make comment on this part of the public input session?
Hi, my name is Toni Hoefler, and I was looking online for the top reasons why families want to move to a community. There are good education for their children, top medical care, affordable taxes, and affordable housing. I don't see Norfolk there yet. Transparency is important, and I'm glad you brought up that. You should do it in the evening so that the people can be here, because a lot of people work, and they need to have the input. So I work on the transparency. And when you spend $5.4 million on CHAF and ARP funds on the river and the Johnson's Park project and on the streets, that's just not right. Streets come first. That's a priority. So priorities need to be managed appropriately. Your wants are winning over the city needs, which are necessary. Excuse me, I'm very nervous. When our taxes keep going up and up and up, what are those taxes being used for? We haven't had much snow in the last three or four years. What's happened with the snow removal money? Is it gaining interest in some fund, or was it spent on something you wanted? At what point does the city drive a workforce out of town due to higher and higher taxes and utilities? There has not been any new businesses brought into the city. A recent study showed that 61% of the Americans live paycheck to paycheck. The U.S. Census Bureau says 12.9% of the persons within the city of Norfolk have income below the poverty level. And the rest of Nebraska is about 10.8%. How does the city think our residents will continue to pay for all this spending? I've had numerous friends move from Norfolk due to the high taxes. They went to South Dakota. We pay taxes not only for the city, but we pay for the Norfolk Public Schools, the college and the county. It all adds up. My husband moved here in 2011. He thought, oh, Norfolk's a good community, but he wants to leave because of all the taxes and everything going on. And I think with the high taxes going up, it'll deter people from coming to Norfolk. I would highly recommend that you prioritize your spending and refrain from getting us into further debt. When you borrow money, it's not only the expense the citizens pay for, it's interest incurred on it as well. When you vote on this, remember you are voting for the citizens, not the special interest groups. We voted for you to represent us. Find another way to get the money that you need without taxing us further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, any further discussion, council? Prior to voting. Oh, come on, go for it.
I'm Kim Davis. Have you forgotten? My first question, Mr. Colvin, is you said that there was other revenue of $6 million? Is that the, all the taxes we pay in our utilities that are added on to our phone bills and all of those taxes?
That's a good question. So, a large part of that is we have charges for services. So if you look at this chart, you'll see there for just under $3 million in that charge for services. So those are fees and other things that the city collects. So for instance, you get a building permit, pet license, I mean, you know, the whole, there's a whole list of fees that the city collects. So most of that is, I would say, for that. You know, and you see there another $44,000 for licenses and permits. We do get some from intergovernmental revenues, so that could be some transfers, that's grants. There's some other things that go into to pay for all that. So, no, those aren't, that's not taxes. That's separate from taxes.
So, so where is the, the money that we spend additionally for city taxes? Not just on our income tax or our homeowner's taxes, but all the little bills we have that have city taxes added on to them?
Sure. Somebody could look at or speak more to where our fees go on our, on our bill, but our, so for instance, your water bill and city utility bill, your electric bill will collect a sales tax. And that, that does go to the city, and that's part of that sales tax number that you'll see on there. As far as other fees that are collected, we'd have to break one down specifically for that, but those aren't taxes, those are fees.
Okay.
If we want to talk about that specifically. But your sales tax that's collected is on, like, the whole. So I mean, your grocery, you know, things that are taxable, at least, not food, obviously, but other things you'd have, the city's sales tax would be included with, along with the state and the entire sales tax you'd pay. And we're just a part of that number.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Another thing I was wondering is, and I've been thinking about this ever since we started talking about raising the lift station fees and, and the, well, just the lift station, for example, and wa, I'm sorry, water and sewer. Is part of that money going to pay for watering the landscape that we're putting in all over town? Or where does that money come from?
For the irrigation, I think most of that gets charged to the parks budget. Is that, is that correct? Yeah. So any irrigation you'll see in the public right of way that's city-owned, anything, you know, you'll see at Skyview or on the playground, you'll see that we've added some irrigation there. That all gets charged to the parks budget.
And how much did our budget go up?
Nate, do you have that number overall or what you've seen? I don't have that number off the top of my head, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You can go back to the side of city division budgets.
Well, I don't know that I have a historical trend.
Water's based, excuse me, Nathan Powell, Parks and Recreation Director, um, water's based on, also on drought, too.
Yep.
We've had some, some pretty high water bills lately, but it's down a little bit this year because of, because of the rain, but we're still in a drought. But, so it really fluctuates quite a bit. We're down from where we were last year, so we're not up, but on water.
Right. And we pay the same amount of water bill that everybody else does. It just comes out of the parks budget. You'll see here on this slide, that's the, the total parks budget. So it's included in that number, 10% of our total general fund expenditures. So of that 10%, part of that money goes to pay for some of that irrigation. But I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have the exact number for you.
That answers that question. I've, I've sat in these meetings, and I've watched you gentlemen, and many times I've heard you say, it's, it's the city. It's all about the city. We're just doing this for the city. I get that. But what you're not focusing on is the citizens of this town or this state also have to pay taxes to the city, to the state, to the commissioners. They're going to have a meeting next week on raising their budget. The school's going to have a meeting next week, or, what is that, the 21st?
No, there is.
Huh? Oh, okay. They're going to discuss their budget tomorrow, which is another 5.5%. We're, we're getting hit with all of these people wanting to raise our taxes. Some people want to call me a conspiracy theorist. Sometimes I might be. But with New World Order and the WEF talking about how we will own nothing and we will like it, it appears that we are being taxed out of our, our livelihood. The, the haves are going to have it all, and the have-nots are not going to have anything. That's what I see coming in our future. If you guys vote to, to pass this bill, then you're not supporting the citizens of Norfolk. You are breaking our backs. You are making us no better or breaking us to where, you know, people who have worked all their lives can't afford to pay for their, their homeowner's insur, or homeowner's taxes anymore. That's how it's getting to be. I guess I'll, I'll just stop by saying, you know, the difference between a conspiracy theorist and the truth is six to 12 months. Thank you.
Kim, thank you for those comments. And I, I do feel they're sincere. I think the culmination, I get it, the culmination of tax askings to citizens in the state is worrisome for a lot of people. But that's why I wanted to make note of, for our city tax rates, we are being very mindful of not, of trying not to add to that. And that's why I went through that list of what we're not taxing in Norfolk compared to some other cities and how we're, we're mindfully trying to keep property taxes at a low level. Is there any other public input on this item? Any further discussion amongst the council?
Steve, when they say that, when we, when the payments start on the CHAF dollars, we'll have, when the interest and the payments start, we'll have only 1.7% left annually.
So, yeah, so currently, and you want to go back to your CHAF projection budgets or your CHAF history budget? So you can see, the, the last bar is what we budget, and we budget a little bit less than what we actually anticipate receiving, just in case there's some fluctuation there. So we budget less. When you look at the history, if things continue the way the projections are, you know, I'd expect to see a similar trajectory going forward. Right now, this fiscal year, the current fiscal year, we're going to do about 4.2 million. When the bond, when we're paying for interest and principal on that bond, I'm kind of thinking back here now, but I believe that's 1.8 million in, in, a $1.8 million payment. So you'd end up with about, you know, 2.4 million a year. So yes, it is a big, it is a big payment. And kind of like we talked about, you would be chasing inflation if you were going to try and save for it. And, you know, the, just that 18 million I talked about, the enhanced portion of that project, I don't remember exactly, 1.2 million or so was the enhanced portion that's all the colored concrete and some of the others, the other items out there. Does that answer your question, councilman?
Jim, since you've been up, there will be another budget-related item on the...
This is out of your documents. This is the city highway allocation fund. It's out of your long-term financial plan. It, for instance, 2930, you're showing highway allocation funds of $3.47 million, and you're showing proposed debt service on that of $2.23 million. So that leaves you, in that case, that leaves you about $1.2 billion.
Correct. So, so Jim's numbers, what he's looking at is the actual city highway allocation. It's actually our, our, there's other monies in there. So what, what's not, what's not included in the number Jim's looking at there is our STIP purchase, which is about a half a million dollars a year that gets added to that. And then there's some bridge funds, some other things that get added into that. That's purely the city highway aid, aid to cities that comes back in that 3.4 million.
Okay. So, yeah, if you add the total of all those things, which I didn't know what those were, that's 4.2 million. So 4.2 minus 2.2, so you've got 2 million bucks left. I said 1.8 in my presentation. I'm not sure where I got the 1.8, but...
Any further discussion? Okay, if not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, adopting the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brianna, did we have a technical amendment? We, we needed to move on this? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Appropriating sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, adopting the proprietary budget statement, adopting the strategic plan, providing for severability, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arns, McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Clausen, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Webb. Ordnance number 5849 carries on first reading.
I'm going to ask a process question here. To meet state guidelines, do we need to have this moved on second, third?
Yeah, it, it has to be submitted by the end of this month. So unless we want to meet again next week for a special meeting, it'll need to be approved tonight.
Do I hear a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion, and we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arns, McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Clausen, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, ordinance number 5849 carries on second and third.
Okay, item 22 would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-59 approving the property tax requests for fiscal year 2023 to '24 in amounts different than fiscal year 2022 to '23.
I'll offer consideration, resolution number 2023-59.
Second.
Motion second. And I believe here, Sheila, is there a technical amendment to this that we need to offer?
Yes. On the resolution, we had a public hearing date of September 7th, but that should be September 14th. So this resolution is another requirement of statutes that any time your property tax changes either up or down from the amount levied in the prior year, you have to have a public hearing. And we had this public hearing on September 14th. So this is the action item that sets the property tax amounts. The debt service property tax does not change. The vehicle parking district levies the maximum 35 cents allowed under state law. A 3.37% increase in their assessed valuation results in vehicle parking district property tax increasing 3,426. The general fund property tax increases 288,779. The assessed valuations increased 8.32%. So this results in a property, property tax levy decrease of 1.12 cents.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. Any questions on that? Any discussion?
I just want to ask, the pink cards that we got, that, is this Norfolk 2?
No. It's a good, very good question. I'm glad you asked it. Norfolk 2 is actually Norfolk Public School System, which is classified as District 2 within the school systems in the county.
Okay, so do you know...
I think we had a conversation with the county last year about specifying that.
That would be good.
Yes. Danny, is that true? Can you affirm that?
Yes. This question came up last year because of the obvious confusion, and I, I did have a conversation with the county. And at the time, it sounded like they were not able to change that designation so that it would more accurately reflect that it was the public schools.
Okay. So do you know if the school board tomorrow night votes to pass their budget? Is the meeting on the 21st? Is that just for show?
We really can't comment on that. We, I, we have to stick to the agenda before us, and that does not involve this. So, thank you.
What I, what I will say is that that's a recent, that last year was the first time for that. That's a new legislative update, where when you're going to increase your levy in, such as, you know, the community college, public schools, the city, the county, there has to be that joint hearing. So I can't, I can't speak to how that process unfolds, but that is a more recent statutory requirement, which is why they have to have one. And this year, the city of Norfolk does not.
But I was under the impression that when they have that meeting, that is to allow people to give the opportunity to speak out. If they've already made their decision, it does no good to speak up, because that's what happened last year.
Right. And I, again, I honestly, I'm not part of that process, because I'm not affiliated with those entities. I'm employed by the city of Norfolk, so I can't speak to how they handle that. I do apologize.
Cindy Booth, I can answer that question. On Monday night, we voted not to increase the levy amount, and therefore we will not be required to go to the joint hearing. So in essence, she is correct. There will not be anything regarding the school, because we're not increasing our levy past what is allowed. Thank you. we're not increasing our levy past what is allowed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other input on item number 22 on the council agenda? Or further discussion, council?
We'll get an amendment on that, on the first whereas, where it speaks to the resolution that's in the agenda packet, says the September 7th of the public hearing date. So we'll just want to correct that to the September 14th, just a simple change.
Do you need that in the form of an amendment, Brianna, or not?
I think so. I think you could argue it's clerical, but if we know about it, and we can just fix it on the record, I think that's the best thing to do.
Okay. Do I hear a motion in that regard? A motion to amend, yeah. A motion to amend with the date changed.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend resolution number 202359 to read September 14th versus September 7th.
Perfect.
2023.
Okay, motion second. No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
We need to vote on the underlying motion, correct?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-59 is adopted.
Takes us to item 23, would look for motion to consider ordinance number 5850 approving the fiscal year 2023 to '24 classification and pay plan.
I'll offer consideration, ordinance number 5850.
Motion second. And once again, Sheila, can you give us some background on this, please?
So this simply implements the classification and pay plan that are included in the 2324 budget.
Okay.
What does that mean, Sheila?
I think Lyle can speak to that.
Can you repeat the question? Yeah, Sheila's going to introduce it.
What's the pay plan? What's the pay plan? What's that mean?
So what number of page is it on the agenda packet? It's the pay plan, as she looks that up, 199. That's the pay plan for all the positions that the city has across the board, full-time positions, from top to bottom, designated by title, minimum and maximum wages per month. Right. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Lyle. Any further discussion?
I noticed on the pay plan that there are now five positions to grade 30. Andy alluded to the fact that we eliminated the assistant city administrator, excuse me, slash public safety director, and added the human resources manager. He also mentioned eliminating a management analyst position. I didn't see that anywhere in the 2022 pay ordinance. I don't see it listed there. So I'm not quite sure where that's eliminated from. I guess the one significant issue I saw looking through this pay plan was the addition of an assistant director of recreation. It looks like we eliminated the parks facilities manager, aquatic supervisor at a grade 19, and added an assistant director of recreation at a grade 24. I think the same person who held the old position was given the new position, resulting in a five pay grade increase. I guess the concern I have is how this happened. I understand this new assistant director of recreation was advertised internally in the summer of '22 as a grade 24. And to the best of my knowledge, interviews were conducted, and that internal person was selected for that position in the summer of '22, and given a raise to a grade 24 effective October 1 of 2022. When I look at the 2022 pay ordinance, I don't see anywhere an assistant director of recreation at a grade 24. So evidently, from what I'm able to tell, that was never approved by council. So have we, I guess my questions are, did the council ever approve this new position and pay grade? Does anybody know?
The answer to that is no, which has happened before in the past. It has happened before. When Nate came in and he was working through his, he was looking at the structure, he's looking at his overall budget, looking at overtime, the goal was to work within the existing budget that we had. So even though you might see a different position, the overall numbers in Nate's budget, which he can speak to specifically, if this is something you want to talk about, council, we can touch on that. But those changes have been made before mid-year, where you have a position that's approved at a certain pay grade, and throughout the year, for whatever reason, based on needs of the position, needs of the city, that that has changed, and then it's made up for it the following fiscal year.
But this was a position that you advertised for and basically filled in the summer of '22. Why wouldn't that have been put in the pay grade schedule that you approved in September of '22 for the city council to vote on that?
Are you...
This, what you're approving tonight...
Correct. You're talking about last year's budget.
I'm talking about last year's...
Because the position was filled last year, and then it wasn't on the October 1st 2022 ordinance?
I'm talking about that specific position was not in the 2022 pay ordinance, but yet you hired for that position before this pay ordinance was ever approved.
Correct. And that was a result of the restructuring, and I would have that operational authority to do that as long as we're working within the budget that Nate has that's been approved by council.
Okay. So you can just change somebody's pay and not put it on the pay ordinance until a year later?
I did do that, yes.
Okay. I would just state Nebraska statute 16310 says this, "The officers and employees in a city of the first class shall receive compensation as the mayor and city council fix by ordinance." So that was not fixed by ordinance, but we paid them that amount.
It was a move and a re-titling of a position, and then the position was reclassified at a level that was based on the needs and the job being done.
So why do we, why do we do this if, I mean, Nebraska statute's pretty clear that they get the pay according to the pay ordinance, but they're not on the pay ordinance, and we change the pay, and it just seems pretty strange to me.
Well, Jim, I can't speak to your specific question right now regarding the legalities of that, but I can just explain exactly what had happened.
It just seems like the council should have say over those pay rates, and they do according to the pay ordinance, but evidently, we just do what we want to do during the year anyway. That's my, that's my concern. It just doesn't seem like an appropriate process. Thank you.
Any other discussion or input on item number 23? All right. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range repealing ordinance number 5802, providing for publication in pamphlet form, and when this ordinance shall take effect.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5850 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5850 carries on second and third.
Item 24 would look for motion to consider approval of a professional services contract with Embrahs Group LLC for a regional detention planning study for an amount not to exceed $65,700.
I'd make the motion.
Okay, motion second. For some background on this, Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor and council, we actually started this process back late '16, early '17, and had gauged a consultant to do some preliminary work on regional detention here in the community. What this is, is when we do, when we're improving ground, when we go work with a developer that wants to do improvement, anything over an acre of development requires them to construct onsite retention as a function of that development. In many cases, that distracts from the development. It's a long-term, it's a long-term maintenance item that that developer has to carry. It takes away from developmental, developmental ground or ground that they could develop and then turn around and sell. And so what this is going to do is continue the work that was previously done, site upwards of around a potential half a dozen different regional retention sites here in town, and then put estimates together and a plan on how we would proceed forward with those. What does regional retention look like? Well, sky view is probably a big concept of regional retention. Everything that's upstream of that, that any development, that drainage comes into a drainage system feeds down to sky view. It's dammed up in sky view, and it's let out slowly, or it's recharged back into the ground. And so it takes, it takes that peak runoff out of our storm sewer systems. As you look down into the lower end of the community that was originally developed first, Omaha Avenue is a good example, when we get big rains, that old storm sewer system that's in that older part of town is just not sized appropriately to take all that storm sewer coming from upstream. And so if we can develop regional retention and work with the developers to fund regional retention, it's healthier for our stormwater system, it's healthier for our street system, has the potential to reduce accidents. And overall, it's a, you know, something that many communities are doing. And the gentleman, we're able to capture one of the gentlemen here that originally worked on this in '16, and have them move forward and present a, present a plan that we could implement. This would be the process here, we would engage the developer community in this process, and then again, build on some of the work that was done back in '16, '17. Fees for this, the funding for this would come out of our stormwater fees.
Any questions on this? Or input? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 25 would look for motion to consider approval toward a contract to Huff Construction LLC of Norfolk for the Johnson Park Improvement Project Bid Package III, Park Structures Project, for an amount of $288,900.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear it from Nate Powell, our city parks and tract director.
Mayor and council, thank you. This is a bid package three of five bid packages that we've been working on for the Johnson Park project. When this did, our original bid came in way high, so we broke them out. And you'll see tonight, we've been able to save over 1.5 million by breaking that out. So big patch, I'll just go through the bid packages real quick. Number one was the fountain and ice. Number two, grading and trails. Number three is the structures that we're talking about now. Four was electrical. And number five will be the irrigation, the wayfinding, the gatehouse, nature, playground, and concessions and landscaping. When we get to that, that'll be our final bid package. That will not be presented tonight. This does include the picnic shelters and amphitheater. The engineer's estimate was 371,000. The projection that we had was 471, and the bid we have today came in at 288. The original Houssman bid was 474. So we did have a significant savings here on this package. We received one single bid from Huff Construction. Staff recommends awarding a contract with Huff Construction, an amount of $288,900.
Thank you, Nate. Can you say again what was staff's estimate on this?
Staff's estimate here, we were projecting 471, but the engineer's estimate was 371. I think our projection came in, you know, after seeing Houssman's bid.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any questions? And the funding source, Nate, again, for this comes from the State of Nebraska grant that was recently awarded, correct?
This is actually the remaining, this is the River Point Improvement Project Fund.
Okay, okay.
In this, or in this bid package, in the enclosure for the ice skating rink in downtown, any specifics of how the ice skating...
The ice skating rink, I guess, will be up next. That's the next agenda item. This is bid package three, I believe.
Okay. Any other questions about bid package three?
Sorry, when will this be completed? Or do we have that on there?
Yeah, we're looking for, I believe, the, is it, Andy's not here tonight?
I was thinking substantial was May.
That's what I would say. The ice and the fountain were by July. Yeah, I think it was May.
Thank you, Nate. Any other discussion or comments on this?
It looks like we have quite a few line items for Johnson Park here this evening. I think everybody's had their fill of Johnson Park, to be honest with you. But I do want to make sure that it is noted that the additional funds that came from the grant from the state for 2 million is going to allow you to stay within your budget on Johnson Park, correct?
That's correct. And it is a game and parks fund, and that's what the fund is...
Sorry, game and parks, yes. But without that fund, we would have probably, some of these projects wouldn't have happened.
We just wouldn't have done them, that's correct, yes.
Right. So with this funding that you received, that is designated to this particular park, correct?
We would have had to, we would...
No, I'm asking that the funding that was received is dedicated to this grant, is dedicated to this particular park, has to be used on this park.
That's correct.
Can't be used for streets, can't be used for anything else?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 26 would look for motion to consider approval toward the bid and enter into a contract with Huff Construction LLC of Norfolk to build a sport court ice rink and water feature at Johnson Park.
I'd give consideration for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Once again, Nate, please.
Okay, again, this is bid package one of five. This was a challenging bid package due to the complexity of the work that needed to be done, a special skill set was needed. The budget here, we had, was 800,000. Our original bid came in at 1,224,155. The engineer's estimate was 747,480. So we were significantly over budget on that first bid. We did deny that bid, and we rebid this as a bid package one. I was part of the original, the original Houssman bid. We did rebid this as bid package one. We did not receive any bids as of June 29th, I think, again, because it's hard to find local interest in special projects like these. So we started working the phones and looking for options. I actually ran into Huff Construction in the hallway and was able to ask them if they would be interested in looking at this project. So we did look at it. We also contacted Water Play to try to get the splash pad cost down. That was significantly overdesigned. This, we did increase our spray heads from 13 to 18. Overall, it's the same look and concept of the original. So from the 1.2 million dollars, we negotiated this down to 755,047. And staff recommends awarding the contract to... awarding the contract to Huff Construction. And again, this, this is part of the ARPA grant from the, from the Department of Natural Resource and Game and Parks, in the amount of 690,000.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Any questions?
Okay, now my question, Nate. There's nothing, there's no description in the enclosure of what an ice rink is? Or where it's coming from?
Yep, so, I guess Steve can help me out with the, the process with the, with the contract and, and awarding a bid, but just like in the previous package, we didn't have the details of the shelters and amphitheater. We usually don't include that bit. I want to see.
Yeah. So, this is, this is the sports court's ice rink, and I think I'm gonna, Nathan, kind of throw it back to you a little bit, but you're the most familiar with that ice, ice rink package that's being provided as part of this bid. Can you describe who, who the, who the supplier of that is, and just kind of what's, what's included there and how that's incorporated into the sports court?
Absolutely. So, this is a customized project. They, this is, what they do is, they do out, build outdoor rinks. There'll be three condenser units that'll refrigerate the sport court. It is a 50 by 90 basketball court in the summertime, double as a refrigerated ice rink in the winter. It only runs when it's, when it gets above a certain temperature, of course. It won't, usually won't run at night, because that's when it's coldest, and during the day, when the heat of the day, it might turn on to, to, you know, chill the ice and keep the ice, you know, in the court. And then, it also includes the, the hockey boards and, and netting and things like that that you need if you wanna, wanna have some ice skating and hockey programs in the, in the ice rink as well. Any other specific questions to it?
What was, what was the brand of this ice skating rink?
Custom Ice.
And who's installing it?
Custom Ice would be installing it.
Okay.
And Huff Construction would be the general contractor on the project.
Nate, I gotta ask, when will this be done?
This is substantial completion, or final completion is July 20, July 50, I believe.
So this will be operational next winter?
That's, that's correct.
Awesome.
Is this the only option we have for an ice skating rink?
We did, I did call others, and in terms of costs, this was what JEO designed for us, and in terms of costs and finding others, the costs were higher than what, what this one was. So there, there would be, just would have to, more than likely pay more.
So you did actually receive other bids?
We did look at what other, this was a while back, because this started, this is back when we were talking with JEO. They were doing the design for us at the time, and so, we were looking at custom ice as, just same with the fountain, we, we kind of pick out what we want, and then they, they design around that. They did that with the fountain as well. And that one is a little bit overdesigned, but, and that's why we were able to find a different fountain. But we get on the phones and talk to different companies across the country, and I, I don't have anything specific, because this was designed specifically for the, for the customized through the JEO design process.
So, Huff here, as you said, is acting as a general, and on the ice rink part of it, Custom Ice is the subcontractor, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
On this project?
That's my understanding. Huff's Construction's here to speak to that if you would like. Okay.
Thank you, Nate.
Yes, we are using custom ice.
You introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry.
Please. Just state your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Chris Daniels.
Okay.
So we're using custom ice. We got that bid, I can't remember if we got any competing bids, I know we did put it out on a bid software, Building Connect is what we use, to get additional bids. Couldn't really generate any more interest. If we did, they were ostensibly high. We also put out bids for the water feature, and I bet we had probably five or six total different bids that we worked, and it's really, you know, testament to the teamwork, working together, Nate and Steve and Anna, and my team at Huff, to really get this cost down for the city and get a great product still, while, you know, being good stewards of the money. Crouch Recreation kind of came, came to the table and gave us a great number for the water feature, and really, you know, a little bit less bells and whistles than we started with, but achieves the same end goal, and something really gonna be nice for the community, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Sorry, it's my first time.
Any, any other questions or discussion? Or input? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arnz Webb, McCarthy, Muren, Norton, Clausen, voting in opposition, Hildebrand, motion carries.
Item 27, with look for a motion to consider approval to enter into negotiations with Huff Construction LLC of Norfolk for designing and building the fishing dock at Skyview Park.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second. Once again, Nate, please.
Okay, so, we're just gonna go through the design build process real quick. This is a new process, not only for, for me, but also for the city. I'll walk through it and recap the, the process. So, the estate of the Mullen, B. Kohler Estate, Jack Kohler, they donated funds for a fishing dock at Skyview Lake in an amount of 250,000. On January night, I met with Game and Parks to discuss, you know, options and request their advice. They directed me to these pre-designed docks, and that's, that's where we're having the discussion right now, is some pre-designed docks, and that's where it really helps out in the design build process, you don't have to go out and pay for somebody to design a, a dock for you. They spent time at the lake to help me find a suitable location, they looked at our depths and, and just look at how, you know, what the depth would be at the end of the docks, and we, we will be presenting that next week to the Parks and Recreation Board. We were also given some design advice, and so we'll be also taking that to the Parks and Recreation Board next week as well. So if public has any interest in, in what the dock will look like, and what kind of design we'll have, we'll be starting that process next week at the Parks and Recreation Board on Thursday evening at 5:30. We did send out proposals, or letters of interest in May, we received three letters back. We sent out proposals back to those individuals, and we received one proposal back. The selection committee, as required by the design build process, chose to move forward with Huff Construction, and that's the only proposal that we did receive. Step one is a, a letter of interest, request for proposals from the top three, that's step two, and today, we're here selecting a firm, that's step three. The next step would be the concept and design, which would go to the board next week, and then contract, and, and then we would build the project in step six. Any questions?
Nate, would that contract then come back to council for approval?
Because, because we're taking the design to the board, that'll come to council as well. That'll be first, and then the contract will follow.
So you, you said that the pre-designed docks that you have, that was a recommendation from Game and Parks?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is just going through design build, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And you only received one bid?
One proposal.
One proposal on there?
We don't, we don't have an agreement yet.
So, I, I'm just, I'm at a loss on this one. You know, I looked through there, I read through there, I actually sat in the first subcommittee meeting, and I just have questions on whether or not we should, I guess I don't know where the other pre-designed docks were, I didn't see it, there's no documentation here in our agenda. I just saw one dock that was in that presentation. Were there others?
In that presentation, there was.
In the subcommittee meeting.
There was one dock in the, in the, in the selection committee for the, for, for the contractor for this project. That was, there was, that was to select a firm. We haven't negotiated that dock yet, and what type we're gonna put in in the contract, which is next, that's the next step. So they did submit a, a design idea and their proposal, but that doesn't mean that's one that we would select or, or use in the final.
And, and that's, again, some of my concern is, I would like to actually see this design process go down the road a little bit further to get a little bit better design than, than just approving this tonight, and quite honestly, I may ask that we table this one. You know, I'm looking at the City of Norfolk's policies and procedures for design build, and part of the negotiation process, City of Norfolk may only proceed to negotiate and enter into a design build contract if there are at least two proposals from design builders, and we only have one. I don't know, do you want to comment on that, Steve or Nate?
So, yeah, that's, that's on us as city from a policy perspective. When we wrote it, we wrote it for, we wrote it with two. Ultimately, if you don't get, I think in this case, we got one, so, we're, we're still allowed to move forward and have a negotiation. Our policy does state two, but that is not a state statute requirement.
I didn't say it was, I just said it's Norfolk requirement.
Right. That was, that was the way we had written the policy. It wasn't intended to, you know, and I'd have, I'd have to go back and try and, trying to figure out why necessarily we wrote two in there. The intent of the policy is not to preclude you from going forward if you don't get the minimum. You know, I, I don't know that going back out and trying to get two proposals that were necessarily gonna result in two, two firms, design build firms submitting. If we only got one design, design build firm interested in the beginning, I, I don't know why two would all of a sudden step forward.
Well, from my understanding, speaking with some representatives from the Game and Parks, that there may be other, more options out there for us to look at, other than just what we received, and I think we received one.
We haven't talked about design today, this is only to talk with Huff Construction about what we're gonna build over there, so we could look at, we can look at multiple designs.
Councilman, are you talking about designs or firms? Design bid build firms that could take on a project?
Well, the designs themselves, I was talking about, but I, I just had some questions on that procedures page, is if we're actually gonna move forward with design build when we're required to have two or more.
I think, I think it's a fair question, and just, to Steve's point, it's partly a response, what, what do you do when there is, it's a project that's shown itself to not garner any more interest in one?
Do we dig deeper, find more people that are interested?
We, we do have a, a firm that's, that did submit, and they did, they were the only firm. I mean, I don't, just like a, a bid, I don't know, can you say, I don't know what we would do at this point.
I, I think maybe, given some uncertainty around that, to Frank's point, maybe we do offer a table here to work through some of this. I also, I say that with some reservation, this is a gift from a Norfolk area family who wanted to see this fishing dock, specifically a fishing dock built at Skyview Park, and I think that was almost a year ago at this point. So I think we have an obligation to keep this process moving forward, but I would say, I don't think a table is out of the question if we can be assured that this is actually gonna keep moving.
Well, and, and to that point, I could not agree more. We need to make sure we honor this, this nice donation that was given to us, without a doubt, and I want to follow it to the T on exactly what they want and how they want it. But I just, the, the fishing dock is, is the term you use, this actually had little slips in it for either rowboats or kayaks, and I just want to see a fishing dock.
That, that's not the design that'll be, that'll be presented to the board next week.
Maybe not, but that's what was that subcommittee?
Right, so, so just to go back to policy a little bit, so, in the policy, it talks about performance criteria developer. So the dock, the dock design, and, and, and I'd have to point, point a little bit over to Nathan, we had to give, within the solicitation, we had to give some concept of what we are looking for from a performance criteria perspective, and I, can you talk about that, Nathan?
I understand that, why is that not in the, the enclosures?
Yes.
Yeah, if, if, I don't design docks, I would have to hire someone to design a dock to bring a dock here, you know, and that costs money, and so I don't have, you know, there's not much funds in here when you can go get pre-designed, but I have to, I have to get permission from the board to talk to a firm to design a dock for us. There's no other option for me, I, I, unless, unless I go out and hire a firm to design a dock for me, I, I'm not a designer, and I can't enter into negotiations without the council asking me to do, allowing me to do that. That's where we're at today. I, I can't, I can't design a dock.
I think with the confusion on the number, you know, I think, unfortunately, I think tabling is probably the right answer, it gives us some time to circle, circle the wagons a little bit with city attorney. It's, you know, it's, it's not uncommon that unfortunately, we only get one, one participant on some of these things, and so we may need to circle around and come back with maybe a revision to policy before, but then I think we can also work with, with our subcommittees and, and Parks Board, and I think we need to do a little bit more explaining and just walking through the design build process so that there's more understanding of the process, and then come back.
I think it's important, the Kohler family designated this for a fishing dock, correct? I mean, that's what they wanted to see happen, I think it's important that we honor those wishes and keep them involved in the process, so they get exactly what they were trying to do when they donated 240,000 to the city.
Absolutely, they've been, they're involved.
I'll make that motion to table it then. I'll make the motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table item number 27.
Second.
Okay, motion second to table? Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion tabled.
Item 28, with look for motion to consider approval toward a contract to A&R Construction Company of Plainview, Nebraska, for the Norfolk Levy Trail Connection of Norfolk Avenue, East Norfolk Avenue by the levee, for an amount of 134,760.27.
I'll have a consideration for a contract to A&R Construction. Second.
Motion second. Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor and Council, this is probably one of the top gap sidewalk slash trail components of the city that, that I hear about. It was about a year and a half ago, we engaged JEO in the design of this, they did this at, at no cost, it was a donation. The actual JEO engineer's estimate on this was around 289,000, if I recall correctly, prior to bidding, I had carved that down, I thought 250 was gonna be a pretty, pretty reasonable engineer's estimate. I'm pleased to announce A&R came in at 134,760.27, so, almost half of the engineer's estimate. They are here in town actively engaged in a project, and I think this is gonna be a little bit of fill-in for them, for their crews over there on the Michigan Avenue and Eighth Street project, so, I'd certainly answer any questions you have for this. I have not had contact with them to see when they would start, but it's, it's quite likely we would see this, some of this construction activity yet this year.
I guess I just have one question, Steve, will they, do you think this can be done yet this fall?
I believe that's their intent, but I do not have any confirmation from them on that.
So Steve, can you talk with a little more specific, specificity about where? So Steve, can you talk with a little more specific, specificity about where this is?
This, this goes from where Arrow Stage Line's office is. This would connect into Arrow Stage Line, just on the, I think that's Box Elder, maybe right there. So basically from Box Elder over to the levy at the top of, going east on Norfolk Avenue up to the top of the levy. So this would be, I guess, an eight-foot trail segment that would connect in.
And we've heard about this for some time, in regards to safety, especially of kids using that, having to cross over East Norfolk Avenue in four lanes of traffic?
Yeah. It's, it's, the, the sidewalk crossing is on the south side there. And so anybody, anybody that's walking or biking uses this, it's quite the cattle path up in that area.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Questions? Input? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 29, we look for a motion to consider approval of change order number five with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvements Project, resulting in a net increase of 52,141 dollars, 51 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number five.
Second that.
Motion second. Steve, once again, some background on this, please.
Mayor and council, a couple of months, a couple of months ago, Pat, Pat Boyle, our construction manager, and I started just discussing bridges, our bridges and our bridge decks, our conditions, longevity. And one of the things that came up was a deck seal. These are not always done, unfortunately, in municipalities. It's just not, it's not something that, that it's, it's part of our design process when we're, when we're doing these. However, more recently, it, it has become a conversation. Many communities, communities are starting to pull the trigger on these, these epoxy bridge deck seals. As we looked at it and looked at, talked, talked to a subcontractor that does these, our window for getting this work done is pretty tight. We would wanna have this work done in the next three weeks. I'm bringing it forward as a change order, just as a function of the timing. We would really like to get this done prior to winter. And outside of the change order, I would have pursued this as a maintenance contract and, and gone out and, and just bid it and gone through that process. If we would've done that, I would not be able to pull the trigger and get it, get a deck seal on that First Street Bridge Deck this year. So this is a method here, bringing it as a change order to the First Street Bridge project that potentially will allow us to have this installed prior to opening to traffic this year. We're still working, working with that contractor on their schedule to see if we can make this happen. Again, Pat Boyle, I give Pat Boyle a lot of credit for the conversation over the last three weeks and bringing this to the table. These epoxy deck seals, your bigger cities, Omaha, Lincoln, they're doing these on most of their bridge deck, uh, bridge deck rehabs or bridge deck replacements. I, I do think, from the, from a longevity perspective, as earlier, you asked me what the longevity would be, you, you push out there into that 60 years, 70 years. This is an integral part of that. What happens over time, as we put chlorides on there to, to fight ice buildup and stuff during the winter, those chlorides soak down into the concrete. Concrete's basically a hard sponge, and it absorbs that chloride. Over time, that chloride will push itself all the way through the deck. And eventually that can start, that starts to eat away at your reinforcing steel that provides all the shrink to the deck. So if we can get this on there, it's about 1% the cost of the, of the bridge project. It would, one of these applications will last 15 years, maybe a little bit more. So you're looking at four of these prior to a rehab. But I would certainly, I, I think it's a good idea if we can get this done. So tonight, first thing we do tomorrow is contact them and say, you're go, and get them scheduled to be here. We are looking, once we would get them here, there's a couple of other things we may have them do. The, I, I get a lot of calls on the median over the Norfolk Avenue Levy Bridge. That median is breaking up and falling apart. It's possible, again, we would look to our maintenance funds to shit, shoot that with the epoxy and stabilize that so we can get down, I think we're 28, 29 for a bridge deck replacement on that. The other one we're looking at is the Box Culvert lid over on Benjamin Avenue. That would be another one, another good potential. But we'll see. This here, this $52,000 here, the $52,000 here is specifically for the First Street Bridge.
Okay.
It looks like, it looks like a chip seal. Anybody's familiar with a, a county chip seal? That's what this would look like when it's done.
Okay. Nate, Steve, any questions? Input? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 30, we look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5851 amending section 24-164 of the city code to restrict parking on the north side of Madison Avenue from the Third and Madison Avenue intersection west 100 feet.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number 5851. Second.
Motion at second. For some background on this, Chief Don Miller of the Norfolk Police Division.
Evening, Mayor and council. This is a parking, no parking request that's been in front of you before. At the time, it involves a northwest corner of Third Madison Avenue is a development that involved a food service business that has a drive-through. And because of the drive-through and the location, it's, we, we realize that it's going to back up traffic onto Madison Avenue. At the time, we talked about this several weeks ago. The request was to wait until they had the construction complete to see how it was gonna operate, which we did. We're bringing it back today. The business is open, and the drive-through is functioning, and it is having the backup traffic exactly as we expected it to. So what we're proposing is having the no parking in the north side of Madison from the intersection west 100 feet to where the drive-through begins. And that will allow cars, a staging area, to back up instead of being into the traffic lane. When I say 100 feet, it's probably about 40 feet of actual parking area because you have to stay so far from the intersection anyway than you have the drive-through and the radiuses that you have to stay from. So we're, we're eliminating parking on about 40 feet.
So about five stalls, four, five stalls or something, about five stalls?
I don't think it's gonna be that many. If it was parallel, it'd be two, if it's diagonal, probably four. Without measuring it out, I don't know exactly. So we're, but because of the way the drive-through is, and you have to stay the distances from that, I would guess four of the diagonal parking. But again, I could measure that out.
Probably close to a total of six, 'cause we got rid of two for the drive-through, didn't we? Before? We got rid of, we got rid of two for the drive-through, the original drive-through, didn't we? A couple of weeks ago, so we're talking about.
Probably. I don't have the drawing of how many, but approximately two. So yeah, and this, if, if we didn't do this, then traffic would be back into the westbound traffic lane and cause more traffic problems. At the time we were looking at this, we had, the stakeholders got together, Steve and the developer and I all looked at their plans. And this is what we came up with as the best result to support the development as well as protect the safety of the, of the motorists.
Don, how many, how many cars does their actual drive-through hold?
The current design, I saw a couple different designs, but the current design that they built, I would estimate four.
Okay. And how many cars will this be holding by taking out the, to restrict the parking there?
Up to four.
Okay.
And that's estimating, 'cause I didn't.
Sure.
Measure it.
Sure. That's fine.
And we, as though, we've seen them currently backed up significantly more than this area as part of this business. And there is parking right across the street to the east. There's a pop street parking by Mongolian Grill, if you're familiar with that on the south side. So there, while we'd be losing some parking, there is parking available very close.
And this was an expected outcome, right? 'Cause you got, you had talked about this probably being an issue before, so this was kind of expected outcome.
And, and we brought this forward, but for good reason. We wanted to wait till the construction was done before we eliminated some parking.
I, I do have one comment. Do you think this is because the business is new, that you have eight cars at one time in a drive-through needing these additional parking spots?
We always see an influx when businesses are new. But you, any, any of the drive-throughs that we go through, it's not unusual to have a significant number, more than what the, the four that would hold. So I, I anticipate this continuing to be a problem. They've been open for several weeks. I don't know exactly, but they've been open for, for a couple of weeks. And it was, it was really bad the first week, and then it died off, and it's been consistent since then as far as needing, needing the staging area.
I would note, it's primarily a drive-through business. I don't believe there's any seating or plans to be any seating or indoor dining inside the restaurant. I think there's some plans for a patio space outside, but, yeah. All right. Any other questions?
I've got maybe a comment to make, is it, you know, we voted on, on having drive-throughs in downtown businesses, and I knew this would eventually become an issue where we would, where we would have this by, by approving the drive-throughs. And I guess my, my concern is this, is that we're using public street and public funding to go ahead and subsidize a private business by taking those parking stalls out, which were owned by the city. So I understand the safety concept of it. I don't like the idea that we're, that we're staging cars for a private business to use a drive-through. So I, that, that's my comment on, on that.
Sure.
I would say we used to have a food truck that would sit in front of our business on Main Street, and it's against city ordinance for that food truck to sit on Main Street and, and sell. So we stopped allowing you, the city said we can no longer have this, the food truck in front of the store on A to Z back and conducting business. My thing is that we set a precedence, allowing this to happen. I did talk to Ben, and I'm like, can they start giving, some of our culvers, give them a, a ticket, and, and then go park in the VPV lot across the, the street from them? And that just seemed like that was not an option for them. So I wish they would use that lot across the street for overflow a little bit more. At the same time, gonna, you know, be business friendly, so it's a tough one.
There's some concern with the interaction potentially between cars backing out of those parking stalls as they are and, and potential backup with the.
That would, that would definitely be a, be a concern, because if they were parked there and the cars were staging on Madison Avenue, they couldn't back up. Until somebody would allow them.
Any other questions or discussions on this?
You know, just on, one more comment. Madison Avenue, obviously, we're talking Third Street on the north side. We also have restricted parking on Seventh Street on Madison Avenue on that north side, west of Seventh Street, I should say. Is, is that, is that still needed, where we don't need any parking there? Or could we possibly take these four stalls and, and put that Seventh Street area back into parking, just to create more?
That's something we would have to look at, but it narrows at Seventh Street, if you're thinking Madison Avenue, as you go west, the road narrows there. So that's something we could look at. I, I don't know without looking at it, and I can't comment on the feasibility of it until we would review it. Is it Matt, Seventh Street, four blocks west?
Yeah. So, or just 100, 110 feet west of there. So I'm assuming when the Nebraska Public Power Building was there, maybe they had the diagonal parking, maybe they needed it, but.
Yeah. We did, Steve and I can review it, but I, until I looked at it more closely, I really shouldn't comment on it.
Okay. I, I'm with Cory. I sometimes kinda hate to lose the, parking's tough downtown the way it is, and then to lose four stalls, it makes it more difficult.
Like, as I said, there, there is parking there at that parking lot to the east, and these people are not parking, and they're just going through a drive-through.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Steve, is there?
It's, yeah, so the conversation, and, and it's something that we don't have in, on our books right now that I'm aware of, but it's, it's access control. We have these issues, not just here with drive-through, but other where in drive, in drive-throughs. And I guess my, my takeaway here a little bit is to do some exploration with access control as we're permitting or working with redevelopment or development as, as a function of access. And I think that would be a good thing, to at least consider that upfront on some of these projects.
Was there any discussion of this at planning commission level in conjunction with the conditional use permit or site plan?
Yes, there's actually something in the conditional use permit. We did not get into this detail of what would happen, but it did come up that we were worried about, you know, not having enough stacking in the drive-through and to at least discuss with staff if there were options available for more stacking. And so that's all that was in the conditional use permit, to see if there were options, essentially.
Okay.
Another concern is when they're lined up like that, and you're coming, heading south and traffic coming from the west, you can't see around the cars that are waiting in the driveway. So to make your way out onto Madison Avenue with a line up there, I mean, I think there's a state statute of how far a parking stall has to be away from a stop sign to allow that vis, visual.
It needs to be, and we could probably, as part of the no parking, we could probably do some sort of markings or spots to stay 30 feet from the stop sign, 40 from the intersection.
I, I do think it's gonna go way down from what it has been as it's opened the doors. I, I think it's like some of the coffee shops, like whatever it is, Chick-fil-A that was down on 81, that was out on the, out on the highway 81. We don't have a Krispy Kremes, but those are a disaster when, when they open. But I, I'm, I am, I, I do think there's a good chance that this is gonna go down to just the cars that can be sustained within their drive-through. And we're not gonna see these big pileouts onto Madison, but time will tell.
I suppose if, in time, if we find out that it's not needed, we could always put the parking back on.
There's an option.
It's, it's already past the process now, the business is there. I feel like the process should've taken place, first of all, in the initial talks, you know, of what this might've done or what this was gonna cause when the, the business went in there. Now we're in a situation, now the business there is open operating, you know, and you've gotta make it safe. So it's, it's almost like this, these, these questions should've been asked. I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm just saying they should've probably been something maybe early on in the development concept.
I'm not saying not to, I'm not saying, I would just like to use that VPV lot across the street or really keep it up the street. I wish we could represent that.
All right. Any further discussion? Questions? Thank you.
Is, is this something, thinking that, you know, even six months or a year down the road, you know, maybe, maybe it can revert back if the traffic isn't there? You know? Steve made a good point.
Yep. Can always be changed back.
You guys, as, as a council, you have that choice to.
Yeah.
To change that back if we decide.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any further discussion? Hearing none, short title, please.
In ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 24-164 of the official city code to restrict parking on the north side of Madison Avenue from Third Street to 100 feet west of the west property line of Third Street. Provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arnz Webb McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Clausen. Voting in opposition, Hildebrand. Ordinance number 5851 carries on first reading.
Okay. That concludes the regular agenda portion of the council meeting. We do have an allotment of public comment, period. Should anyone wish to come forward to talk about anything else that Should anyone wish to come forward to talk about anything else that we've not talked about previously this evening.
Jim McKenzie, several months ago, I asked you to change your policy to allow public comment period at every meeting and nothing's changed. I've seen people come in here wanting to speak and they've been shut down. Are we going to change that?
I think we've done a little research, Jim, on public comment periods and what other cities are doing. I mean, to start, there's no requirements under state statute that they be done at all. But Danny can, were you, did you do the research on that? As to what our peer community, peer communities are doing?
A little bit. I mean, it's my understanding that there's some communities that do have more regular public comment period. And then there's some communities that have it less frequently. So we're, we're kind of in the, in the middle as far as comparability is concerned. That's ultimately a policy question for the council to make.
I mean, do you not think it's beneficial to have the public have an opportunity to come and speak to you all in front of the staff and the public and express their concerns?
I probably won't be popular, but I, I kind of think that it, it is a good thing. I've talked about it in the past a little bit. I was kind of thinking, I know this probably out of nowhere, but I mean, I think every other meeting was, would be a good idea. We hear a lot of good things. You know, we hear things we wouldn't normally hear. And that's kind of where I'm at right now. I know we, was it four times a year right now? So, you know, I was, I guess I was just thinking that it would be beneficial. I would hear more and get a chance to, it's not always what we want to hear, but sometimes it's, it's needed. So, I mean, I would be down for, to consider or make a motion at some point for every other meeting. But that's kind of where I'm at.
We used to do a thing called Coffee with the Council. We kind of stopped doing that. It was, it just wasn't getting much people coming in and talking to us after the council meetings. But they would have coffee and cookies and you could, it would, it'd be two different wards. Would have one evening and then people would come in and they could communicate after the meeting too. And you got, I got a lot of good feedback from people. But it, after, when it started, it was fairly popular, but then it kind of, kind of died off and it wasn't as, but I, I just, some people mentioned that tonight, like, you know.
Shane, was that here in chambers?
Yeah, they had it right out here.
I, I, in my opinion, it's much better to do it at a regular meeting where you've got all the council people here instead of a couple of council people, where you've got staff here, the press here, the public, so that everybody knows what those concerns and discussions are.
But this is like, you know, some people have, don't want to come up and speak, but they want to talk to somebody. You know, being here and I thought, I always thought that was a good thing, but we just kind of.
If you want to do those things on the side, that's fine. I think public comment should be in this body and this environment. The other question that I'll ask is based upon our discussions on pay raises. Do you as council understand that the city administrator can give a pay raise of any amount at any time, even for a full year and not have to ask for your approval? And that seems like it goes completely contrary to what state statute says. I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but when I read state statute, that's not how I read it.
We've had discussions about it, Jim, since it was brought up. So I don't think it's a topic that'll go away. That's my feel for it.
I, I think that's critical that you don't have one person who can arbitrarily give very significant pay raises and you have no control other than a year later say, yeah, I guess they've already been getting that raise for a year. I probably better allow it. That's not, not a good process.
This is any subject? Okay, I just wanted to ask, you know, the last session, we, you guys blighted my home area because the houses are old, they may have asbestos or may have lead paint. Are the houses on Eighteenth and Madison, are those blighted? Are the houses on Jackson, Jefferson, Miller, on South Omaha, are those areas blighted? Because they look a heck of a lot worse than my area does. Or is this all about the river project?
Kim, I'll have to ask to clarify. Have we blighted anything in that area recently? Candace, can you help me out with that?
Yeah, it was, it was already blighted, correct?
It was, yeah, it was already in a blight area in association with the downtown district. Staff can help me out on this, but it was, it wasn't, it wasn't a new blight, it wasn't a new blight designation. It was, it was re-designated for purposes of obtaining a community development block grant for downtown. And I would, I would guess for some of the areas that you'd mentioned, they are blighted already.
I know of two houses that could use some work in my area, but on these other streets, I can show you six or seven.
Yeah. I, yeah, be careful, talk about the, the blight definition within state statutes. It covers very many things. It's age of facilities, it's, you know, perceptible deterioration in buildings, but it's beyond that too. So it's not necessarily just conditions of houses or what they may look like from the street.
But that's what all those pictures were?
It's like the downtown blight study?
Building facades, cracks in the sidewalk or in the parking lot, that, that's what blighted it? Cause we don't have that in my area. I just, when I was reading some of the statute, it, it said it provides the opportunity for businesses to come in and upgrade. I know there's a lot of plans for Johnson Park. I know somewhere down the road, my house is going to be a part of them. Was this blighting it? Was that making it easier for them to do that?
No, and if I recall the here, public hearing correctly, the blight designation, the redesignation of that area was specifically for allowing staff to pursue a community development black, block grant for downtown facade improvements for businesses.
Yes, but Oak Street, Cottonwood, those are not downtown.
Is that blight area inclusive of the, of Johnson Park?
Yes, so we generally followed the same general boundaries of the previous light study when we did a redesignation on this light study. And this is again to be qualified to meet the national objective to apply for community development block grants. And so the, the grant that we submitted is going to be used for, if awarded, downtown revitalization for facade improvements for downtown businesses. And then ADA accessibility for those mid-block crossings. So wheelchairs and strollers can more easily use those. And so it's not related to the Johnson Park project. It's more related to that downtown revitalization grant.
But again, those streets are not downtown.
And yeah, the boundaries were selected based on the previous study. And that was what was restudied.
Was that about ten years ago or?
It was a little over ten years ago, the previous designation. Because we had, it cannot be any older than ten years in order to be considered as that national objective to apply for grants. So there would be opportunities for residents within your blight area to take a look at if you're going to do housing improvements to utilize different programs like Microtip to assist with the redevelopment of your own homes. So that could be a benefit for individuals within your area.
Okay, but does it, does it lower the value of our homes that were in a blighted area?
No.
No, ma'am.
My, my house was put in a blighted area a few years ago in association with the renovation of the apartment building next door. So, and, and property values have not been affected. I can say my property violations have gone up since then.
Paula Pennington, and you've talked about the beautification of different roadways. Benjamin Avenue specifically because new lights have been put in. Landscaping has been done. But as I mentioned to you, Mayor, when we visited a couple of weeks ago, as you go west or east, either way, on the north side of Benjamin, you've got your tall streetlights that are new because they were moved back in regards to the construction. But along there, you've got your short, old-looking streetlights. You've got the middle streetlights. And I think there's maybe a fourth size in there also. So you've got four sizes, four sizes of lights and fixtures going down Benjamin Avenue. And it looks junky. It's, you know.
Can I stop you there? Steve, those older lights will be removed, correct?
Correct. And PPD, when I spoke to them earlier last week, they were supposed to have those gone down before the end of the week, Friday. I think they're still up on the east side of Riverside. So I'm not sure why they have delays, but all that old infrastructure will come down.
Okay, so the new lights that were put up, the new black, like old-fashioned streetlights, they're going to be taken out?
No, not the new ones. The.
Big tall ones?
The, the cantilever lights that are up on the wood poles that hang out over Benjamin Avenue.
So you go to this huge expense to put those big poles and lights in? And then you're going to be taking them back out?
The poles are staying in. It's just the little, the, the arm that sticks out off the pole and, and holds the luminaire out over the street.
What are you doing with the poles then?
They're staying there, the wood poles, the wood that hold the power lines, they're staying there.
So along that, along on the south side, there's, seems to be equal distance and more of the short lights going down to Riverside. And on the north side, I think where the church is or the insurance company, there's two lights. So are you going to be adding more of the short lights along that sidewalk?
East, between Riverside and First Street, the permanent lights are all, the new permanent lights are all in place.
So why do you not have the same amount on the north side as you do on the south side?
Could have been right away, it could have been right-of-way restrictions, utility restrictions. They did a lighting study in there and so the corridor will be evenly lit. And, and they, the designers that did that, that's just the way they did, that's the way they designed it.
Okay, then another question, and it concerns Johnson Park, which knowing me, you know, nobody's surprised. But why is there a fountain splash pad on, by Prospect? And then a waterfall down in the lower area where you're putting the amphitheater that really not many people want in there because of the music? Why are you having two water features when, when you've put in boulders in the brown water for kayaking? It, it makes no sense.
I'll have the parks department. So the question is the splash pad on, on the upper part, that's.
Right.
Yeah, that's, well, we're kind of losing a community park, we're putting one back together. So that's why we took out all the features there and we're putting in a, a better playground, better features for that community park. It's also for those that don't get in the river, there's not, not, not everybody will be getting in the river. Most kids won't actually, but.
I think for some clarification, I, there's not necessarily two different water features. They're one and the same, the, the water feature and the splash pad. The, the splash pad and the water feature are one and the same. They're not two different things.
But there's waterfall down below.
I think she's talking about in the river.
No, no.
That.
On your diagram, it showed that there was waterfall. If I'm not mistaken, maybe it's been taken out to be kind of in the area where the amphitheater was going to be. And maybe.
Yeah, not, not there, no, no.
No, just one, just one.
And making the park a better park isn't, isn't, that's not a truthful statement with all the cement that's in there.
And, and you're correct, Paula, in some of the original, in some of the preliminary layouts on the park, the water feature, it's a, it's a water fountain. It'll have whatever, eighteen jets that shoot water up at different heights. There's no, it's not a, it's not a splash pad like Embrace Park where there's toys and stuff in there. It's just a, it's just a fountain. Yep, but it was, you're correct. Originally, it was shown closer to where that amphitheater structure was. And then as the sports court, ice arena, portion of the project evolved, that eventually moved there. And so the water feature was moved, moved north.
That water feature has always been in that north side.
In that general area, yes.
But the one that I'm speaking of that's down below, like I said, maybe that's been removed.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's nothing there. It's just, it'd be just the river itself and those eight drops and then the only other.
Well, not that far down, but right below where the flag is.
Yeah, nope, nothing there.
Okay, so it's just one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Brooks, twenty-two oh-four Highland Drive here in Norfolk. About ten months ago, the, we had a vote. And unfortunately, the vote got knocked down. And we've discussed all these other things, but the fact still remains that we've got renovation plans to the police department. And in my estimation, we haven't done anything really to address that. So I'm going to throw out a proposal. I don't even know if it's legal, but I'm going to say it anyway. I would propose that we have a group of citizens and some individuals from the city. And we get together and discuss and come back with a plan to address this situation with the police department. A town or a city, whatever, I don't know, I've heard both. Pretty soon we'll be a village if we keep beating this around the bush. A town this size, we need some adequate facilities for the police department. And we've addressed a whole lot of other things and whatever, but I just don't see anything coming to this up to now. And I want to drive some action. I've sat here for, I don't know, I think it's getting close to four hours tonight. And I've heard numerous speakers come up here and it's nothing, the end of the night. It's just negative, negative, negative. Everything that you folks try and do, somebody's got to get up here and drive it into the ground. One of the speakers that's been up here numerous times tonight made a plea about three months ago at the city, at city council meeting, saying that we need to get together and all of us get on the same page. I didn't hear that individual address any of that tonight. But anyways, the hour's getting late, but I would just like to throw that out. My idea is it would be about eight individuals, four private, four city. And I'd like to have you give that some. four city, and I'd like to have you give that some consideration.
Thank you, Brad. I think it's a good idea, a task force of sorts. I will say there, as you know, because you attend regularly and were part of these discussions, there were some ideas floated earlier this year, including perhaps an occupation tax just on alcohol to help raise the funds needed to fund the police station renovation and expansion. There were some people at the time there who said, "No due taxes at all on anything whatsoever." And so, this council basically hasn't done anything to move any ideas forward since. And I think you're right, it doesn't need to change.
Anyway, that's- Well, I just sat here and had planned to come up and talk about this subject, but then I just, you guys have been called names, everything else. It's just ridiculous. We're never going to get anywhere unless we start thinking, working together through things. It's just, it's essential. So, anyways, thank you for your-
Conclude the evening. Thank you, Brad. Any other comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.